The following program is a production of Hoike Kauai Community Media.
Five, and I'd like to call to, to order the subdivision committee meeting of the planning commission.
Morning Chair, members of the commission, first order of business, roll call. Commissioner Strayford?
Here.
Commissioner Nalas?
Here.
Charakul?
Here.
Do you have a quorum, Mr. Chair? Next we would have the approval of the agenda. The department doesn't have any recommended changes to the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? All those in favor for the approval of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Agenda is approved.
We have no minutes, we have no additional receipt of items for the record. Last minute, comments were received from Public Works for one of the agenda items forthcoming. Onto unfinished business, preliminary subdivision map approval, subdivision application number S dash twenty twenty five dash one, Suoka store expansion project SMK Inc. Propose eleven lot consolidation into one lots. TMK is two dash eight dash zero zero eight, zero two zero, zero two two through zero two nine, zero three four, zero three five, located in Kaula Kuauii. I don't have anybody signed up to testify on this agenda item. Are there any members of the public that would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing none and recognizing the business we have today, the department is ultimately requesting a deferral on this to further work, for the applicant to further work with Public Works Engineering. So the department will just ask for a deferral quite honestly because they'll be coming back with responses to Public Works requirements. But if you guys have any questions about it.
How lo, how long of a, a deferral?
Uh, can you give a recommendation?
So we recently received, after writing this supplement report, we received updated comments from the Department of Public Works Engineering Division. So we will be scheduling this subdivision application on the December ninth, planning commission meeting. For preliminary subdivision approval.
Thank you.
Kenny, if I could ask a question, uh, there is a, there is a, on page four of the application, under C, it says that they're looking at a roundabout by, at Kaula Road and Poipu Road. I believe that's not the intersection that they're looking at in terms of the roundabout. Because that Kaula Road and Poipu Road would be where the, uh, gas station is, I think. Alright, is?
Uh, yes, that's correct. So I think the future improvements, um, on Kaula Road will, will be for a roundabout at the Kaula Road intersection as well as, um, the Kaula Road and Maluia Road.
So there's two?
Two roundabouts.
There's actually three. There's gonna be another one in Poipu, actually.
Okay, great. If that could be reflected in here, because this doesn't make any sense that that would have, that this particular one at Poipu and Kaula, Kaula Road would actually help the getting into Suoka's.
Okay, we'll do, we'll work with the applicants. Thank you. Do you have anybody from the applicant that would like to add to this discussion right here?
Good morning, Maranis Mendez from Isaki Surveying here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, just the roundabout at Hoipu Road and Kaula Road, that, that's a county project. With the work that the owners have been doing with Public Works, there's, uh, they're looking into another additional roundabout at Maluia and Kaula Road, right in front of Suoka's, if that clarifies the question.
Thank you. That makes it more sense.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
So this is for deferral?
Yes.
Question, deferral.
Do you have a motion to defer? I move to defer subdivision application number S twenty twenty five dash one to the December ninth meeting.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, if you can have a?
Roll call, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Strayford?
Aye.
Commissioner Nalas?
Aye.
Charakul?
Aye.
Motion, passus chair. Next we,
Thank you.
New business, preliminary subdivision map approval, subdivision application number S dash twenty twenty five dash eight, Calypso Properties LLC propose four lot subdivision TMK three dash three dash zero two one zero four eight, located in the Wiliwili and Maluli Hui Kuauii. Uh, we don't have any members of the public signed up to testify on this agenda item. Are there any members of the public that would like to testify? Seeing none, I'll hand it over to Kenny for the report on this matter.
Summary of the report for the record, the proposal involves a four lot subdivision within the residential Arten zoning district, open zoning district and state land use urban district. The subject property is located within Grove Farms Waola Phase One subdivision and involves a total area of approximately one point zero nine, nine zero nine acres. Chair, we have received agency comments from the County Department of Public Works Waste Water Division, the County Department of Water, the County Fire Department, the County Transportation Agency, the State Department of Health and the State Office of Foreign Affairs. We've received, we've also received, uh, comments from the Department of Public Works Engineering Division after the transmittal of the subdivision report to the planning commission. The department requests that these, that their comments be included with the subdivision report. And, uh, the department is recommending preliminary subdivision map approval.
Any questions for Mr. Estes? If not?
Is there a requirement for a capa okai analysis for this?
Yes, there's a, there is a requirement. It's a, it's a, it's gonna be a requirement of tentative approval for this subdivision application.
Thank you.
Not, do you have an applicant that would? This is really hard, you know. So listen, do we have an applicant that would like to add to this application?
Good morning Commissioners, Maranis Mendez from Isaki Surveying here on behalf of the owner. The capa okai, the owner hired a consultant back in May and they're awaiting the, the report. So they will be complying with that condition.
Thank you. Not, any other questions? Okay. If not, be willing to entertain a motion. I move to approve preliminary subdivision map, subdivision application number S dash twenty twenty five dash eight.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other last discussions? If not, Mr. Clerk, if you can have a roll call vote please?
Roll call, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Strayford?
Aye.
Commissioner Nalas?
Aye.
Charakul?
Aye.
Motion, passus chair.
Thank you.
Next we have preliminary subdivision map, subdivision application number S dash twenty twenty six dash three, State of Oe Charles K and Eileen Bright, propose two lot consolidation, TMK is four dash six dash zero two seven, zero ten and zero two five, located in Kapak Kuauii. We have one member of the public signed up to testify, Roslin Cummings. Roz Cummings? Seeing none, uh, I want to turn it over to Kenny for the report on this matter.
Summary of the report for the record, um, the proposal involves the consolidation of approximately one thousand three hundred and eleven square feet portion of an abandoned Detroit away owned by the State of Oe with Lot eleven, owned by Charles and Eileen Bright. The State of Oe Board of Land and Natural Resources approved the sale of this portion on April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. As a condition of the sale, the applicant is required to consolidate the acquired land with their property through the county's subdivision process. Uh, Chair, we have received agency comments from the County Fire Department and the State Historic Preservation Division. Comments are still pending from the County Department of Public Works, the County Department of Water and the State Department of Health. The department is recommending preliminary subdivision map approval.
Questions for Mr. Estes? Questions for Mr. Estes? If not, applicant?
My name is Thomas Oi, I, Tommy Oi lands surveying LLC. This is Charles Bright, owner of Lot eleven. That, um, the ditch runs behind, uh, on his back boundary. And in two thousand and three, uh, the state gave us approval, uh, when the land board gave approval to, uh, selling of the ditch remnant, the ditch. And, uh, I was on the land board at that time, so I'm pretty familiar with this project. And the ditch that, uh, is in question has been abandoned for years. I would say, um, I would say maybe about forty years already. Uh, a lot of the, um, ditches, uh, you know, because of the, it was abandoned just due erosion and it's all filled. Most of the dishes are filled, so there's no water passing through the ditch.
Questions for the applicant? Okay. If not? Can you entertain a motion?
Um, before we do, um, I just have a question for the department. You know, this is more like a boundary adjustment, right? So, uh, why do we have to go through the subdivision process?
It still causes subdivision. And we got those new, um, rules spun up for residential properties that allow us to, um, do that ministerially. We're still waiting, pending the clerk's enrollment, county council stuff to transmit it. But, um, this is being a relatively easy subdivision, given it is essentially a boundary adjustment, but it still has to go through a formal subdivision.
So I'm, I'm assuming this ditch, uh, right of way or easement, it's only about fifteen feet usually, right? The, eh, the width of the easement or, or right of ways?
Uh, it was, uh,
Fifteen feet?
Actually, you know, a lot of, uh, that, that was a separate parcel owned by the state, a ditch park. It wasn't an easement, it's just, uh, it's a ditch right of way. And when you talk about right of way, that means, um, it isn't an easement or, and it wasn't reserved by the state going through their property. So it was a separate lot, that's why, uh, I think it runs from, um, all the way up, uh, Kauai Ha'oa Road. And all the way down to, um, I think Kapaa High School.
High School and beyond to Ilona Dairy originally.
So that's, uh, that's in this case, because it's a right of way, not a easement or, uh, the state didn't reserve it to, uh, private property, uh, it's easier to, um, subdivide and abandon because the state actually owns it. There's no question on who owns the ditch. Uh, who owns the right of way. So, and then, uh, what can happen is that, um, it has to be subdivided according to a land board approval. And the land board also, uh, uh, under approval, you have to consolidate it with your lot. Because, um, in this case, you know, if it was a big parcel and it separated two, two big parcels, if, in the past, they didn't consolidate it, and what happened was that they separate, you know, I think Kaiana knows that now they get two different parcels with, uh, double the density. But by consolidating, the density stays the same, you know.
So is this something that maybe in the future will not come to the commission?
This is, this agriculture zoning though, right Kenny?
Oh, this is all within residential or for?
Oh, yeah. It would potentially. It, it just was seen as we'd be able to do this possibly quicker through the existing process. Yeah.
So my guess is we're gonna be seeing a lot of these. Once one parcel sold, it disconnects the ditch and now you gotta?
Yeah, hopefully it would, in the next month or so, we hope to have the rules, the administrative rules enrolled, and at which point no even.
Thank you.
And, uh, when I was at, uh, I was the, uh, DN on our land manager for Kauai. And then we were responsible for all these abandoned ditch and the reason is, uh, the state is trying to get rid of it because we still have to maintain it. You know, you're complaining from the adjoining lot owner that the bushes, then we gotta go over there and clear it. This way they put the responsibility on the owner. When our water co-op operated that ditch, um, we were told that, you know, we, we agreed, you can sell this off, but we're not, we're not gonna use this ditch again. But we were told, uh, the, the, um, they may wanna reserve it for road widening. So that was the excuse at the time. I guess that's no longer applicable.
I have one question. Was this, was this ever used as a ditch, a water ditch?
Well, uh, you know, um, actually, that was, uh, Kapaa Homesteads. And when it was under the homesteads, it was, uh, sold as agricultural properties. And the ditch in the, uh, in the past, uh, the ditch was used for irrigating water for, uh, homestead lots. But then to along Kauai Ha'oa Road, if you, uh, look, there's a lot of subdivisions along Kauai Ha'oa Road that at one point, you know, it wasn't necessary to, uh, utilize this ditch.
Any other questions for the applicant? The staff? Not, if we're ready, we can entertain a motion? Recommendation was to approve, yeah. Recommendation was to approve.
The department's recommendations for preliminary approval.
I move to approve the subdivision application number S dash twenty twenty six dash three. That involves a, a two lot consolidation.
Second. A motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Clerk, if you have a roll call vote please?
Roll call, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Strayford?
Aye.
Commissioner Nalas?
Aye.
Charakul?
Aye.
Motion, passus chair. Next we have a extension request for subdivision application number S dash twenty twenty three dash one, Kokuyla parcel A two F two F three subdivision BBCP Kokuyla LLC propose thirty-one lot subdivision TMK two dash six dash zero two two zero two zero, located in Lawa Kula Kuauii. Uh, we have one person signed up to testify, Roslin Cummings.
Hello, Commissioner Dan Chair, good morning. Uh, I think that you have your county attorney present.
You stick, uh, you gotta turn on the microphone?
Sorry.
Uh, the, the button, the white button, there. You can state your name for the record, Roslin.
Okay, Roslin Cummings. Aloha, good morning, uh, Chair and Commissioner. I see you have your county attorney present. Um, in this particular agenda item, in the application Kokuyla S dash twenty twenty three dash one, this project remains in active, uh, contested case status since August twenty twenty five. Placing it back on today's agenda violates the doctrine of its list pendants and HRS section ninety-one dash nine. And I also want to make sure that for the record, each subdivision listed under section J demonstrates continuing patterns of fiduciary, uh, duties. Applicants show systematic noncompliance with HRS section three forty-three, six E and one seventy-four C. Mahalo.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else to sign up to testify. Is there any other member of the public that would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Kenny for the brief report on the extension request.
Summary of the report for the record, the applicant is requesting an extension of time to file a final subdivision map with the planning department pursuant to section nine dash three point eight C one of the subdivision ordinance. Uh, this application was granted preliminary subdivision map approval by the planning commission on November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the applicant's extension request is a third extension of tentative approval. The proposed development involves the subdivision of Lot thirteen of the Kokuyla parcel E subdivision into a total of twenty-four residential lots, four remaining parcels and three roadway lots. The subject property is located on the western side of Kokuyla master planned area involving a total area of approximately one hundred thirty-six point three seven eight acres. The subject property is county zoned residential district R four, open district, special treatment open dis, open space and special treatment district cultural historic. In reviewing the progress with this subdivision, it should be noted that the subdivision received construction plan approvals and construction is currently underway. The applicant has submitted a subdivision agreement and bond for the completion of subdivision improvements after final subdivision approval, which is presently being routed for the required signatures. Currently, the applicant is working with the planning department to resolve the provision of public access within the subdivision. This will involve updating the Kokuyla public path and trails exhibit to reflect any new public access routes within the project area. In addition, the applicant continues to work with the various reviewing agencies to resolve the remaining conditions of tentative approval. It is recommended that an extension until November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-six be granted to obtain final subdivision approval.
Thank you Kenny. Any questions for Mr. Estes? Not, do we have any? What if from the applicant that would like to add? Morning, Mr. Trust.
For the record, Monica Trust, on behalf of applicant, thank you Chair, um, subdivision committee members. As stated by Kenny, this extension request is just to cover the time to have the subdivision doctored for final map approval. All state and county approvals have been obtained as required by law. Uh, prior extension requests were required in order to comply with the various requests of the department sister agencies as part of subdivision review. Um, BBCP has been diligent in moving this subdivision forward. Mr. Rivera, Mr. Crawford has been, uh, meeting with the department, planning, Public Works and everyone in order to accommodate the requests. We appreciate the department's recommendation and respectfully request that you, uh, follow it today. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer them.
Any questions regarding the extension?
Uh, do you anticipate that in a year, that this, all of the approvals that you require will be met?
They, they have, they have been, um, I believe they have been, uh, met and construction is actually proceeding right now. They've been bonded and everything. So we just need to get the final map approval as, I don't wanna say a formality, but that's the last step.
Any other questions for staff or for applicant? If not, if we're ready for a motion?
I move to approve preliminary subdivision extension request. Subdivision application number S dash twenty twenty three dash one to November sixteen, twenty twenty six.
Second.
You do the date, sixteenth, November sixteenth? Or fifteenth? I don't remember. Okay, I'm sorry. Please, if you have. So if you have any other discussions? Not, Mr. Clerk?
Roll call, Mr. Chair. Roll call, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Strayford?
Aye.
Commissioner Nalas?
Aye.
Charakul?
Aye.
Motion, passus chair. Next we have subdivision application number S dash twenty twenty four dash two, Moloa Farms LLC have all proposed eleven lot subdivision, TMK four dash nine dash zero zero nine zero zero one, Moloa Ha'oa Kuauii. Uh, we have one person signed up to testify, Roslin Cummings.
Hello, good morning again, uh, Roslin Cummings for the record. I would like to actually do all my subdivision petitions at once. I don't know if I could do it at the end? Would that be easier? I have to do one by one?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, we appreciate it too, Roz, but technically they're all individual agenda items.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. So under the fifth one, it's S twenty twenty four dash two, Moloa Farms LLC. Eleven lot agricultural subdivisions with no statement of water availability required under HRS section one seventy-four C dash five, breach of fiduciary duty to protect groundwater. Also, I'd like to make it a note of record. Um, I was looking online to see if I could do a review prior to any of the subdivisions and he didn't find anything, so it didn't give me enough time to review it. Can you put that on the public record? Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up to testify, any member of the public that would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing none, department will turn it over to Kenny for his brief report on this matter.
Summary of the report for the record, the applicant is requesting an, an extension of time to file the final subdivision map with the planning department pursuant to section nine dash three point eight C one of the subdivision ordinance. This application was granted preliminary subdivision map approval by the planning commission on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the applicant's extension request is a second extension of tentative approval. Proposed development subdivides Lot two A into ten lots and one, and a roadway lot. The project involves a total area of approximately one hundred thirty-three point four two seven acres and is situated within the county agriculture and open zoning districts. The subject property is primarily within the state land use agricultural district, however, there are sections within the project area that are situated within the state land use conservation district. In considering the extension request, it should be noted that the applicant has shown some progress with the development and has been working to comply with the various conditions of tentative approval. As we represented, the applicant is still working to resolve the required infrastructure improvements associated with this application and determining the applicable requirements of the county of Kauai Department of Water, Department of Public Works and the County Housing Agency. Additionally, over the past year, the applicant has been working primarily to secure water service to the subdivision, which involves a dispute with the neighboring Moloa Hui Lot One regarding their right to access the common water system serving both Moloa Hui Lot One and the subject subdivision. Since it is uncertain as to when the applicant will be in compliance with the requirements of tentative approval, another time extension is being requested. It is recommended that an extension until November fourteen, twenty twenty-six be granted to obtain final subdivision approval.
Questions for Mr. Estes?
Just a statement, it appears that they're, they're working on it and they have had progress in the last year towards working on this.
Yes, correct. They are currently, um, the applicant is currently working to resolve the, um, the infrastructure into the subdivision.
Do we have the applicant here that would like to add comments? Seeing none, if we have any other questions, any other concerns? If not, we can entertain a motion.
I move to approve the subdivision application number S dash twenty twenty four dash two for a second extension until November fourteen, twenty twenty, uh, twenty-six.
Second. It's been moved in second. Seeing no other further discussion, Mr. Clerk, if you can have a roll call vote please?
Roll call, Mr. Strayford?
Yes.
Commissioner Nalas?
Aye.
Charakul?
Aye.
Motion, passus chair. Motion, passus chair. Uh, last, we have the final subdivision map approval for subdivision application number S dash two thousand nineteen dash four, Tim Beckman and Mira Hess. Propose four lot consolidation and re-subdivision into three lots, TMK two dash eight dash zero one four zero three eight and zero four two, Kaula Kuauii. We have one member of the public signed up to testify, Roslin Cummings.
Hello, good morning again. Um, so my name is Roslin Cummings for S dash twenty nineteen dash four, Beck, Beckman and Hess. Permit is over five years old and resubmitted without new public notice under HAR section fifteen dash fifteen dash fifty. This constitutes as an expired and unlawful action, so collectively, these omissions show systematic failure to conduct environmental and cultural reviews, lack of transparency, breach of fiduciary duty owed to the trust in land and water, and I request each proceedings that no approvals issued until full compliance demonstrated. I have another question, so I missed one, two, the S dash twenty twenty five dash one, S dash, uh, S dash twenty twenty five eight, S dash twenty twenty six dash three. Am I able to provide testimony or not?
Those were acted upon.
I'm sorry?
Those were acted upon, but they weren't final map subdivision approvals, so they ultimately have to come back to the.
So can I give public testimony or not? And do I have to come back for every individual one again?
You can just give testimony by announcing which subdivision?
Okay.
Give your testimony, we'll time you, then your next one, we'll time you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll wait till we finish all the items.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Well, if anybody else signed up to testify, would any other member of the public like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll turn it back over to Kenny.
Summary of the report for the record, um, in evaluating the project, the proposed subdivision consolidates four existing lots and re-subdivides them into three lots. The surrounding parcels to the south and east are county zoned open while parcels to the north end zone residential. These parcels are within the state land use urban district. Um, it should be noted that the parcel identified as a remainder of exclusion. Um, it should be noted that the parcel identified as a remainder of exclusion seventeen is considered a kulianna. Accordingly, as a condition of tentative approval, the department required the submission of a title insurance to verify that ownership of the kulianna is clear. Uh, Chair, the department of, has received final recommendations from the Department of Public Works Engineering Division, the County Department of Water, and the State Department of Health. The planning department is recommending final subdivision approval.
Any questions for Mr. Stessis? If not, do we have somebody from the, from the, on behalf of the applicant?
Good morning, Manerais Mendez from Mesaki Surveying, here on behalf of the owners, and it's been a long process for them and they've been patient throughout and comply with the requirements, so they would like to respectfully request the final approval of this subdivision.
Questions? You know, I believe that this is one of the applicants, uh, application that has come in in about twenty nineteen or so prior to the implementation of actually the Kapa'aka analysis. The Kapa'aka analysis decision came down from the Supreme Court. Was there a Kapa'aka analysis done on this project here?
There's, there wasn't done, it wasn't a requirement when they applied for a subdivision. So the timeline is correct.
Would the applicant be agreeable to conducting a Kapa'aka analysis on this project?
They've made a statement, and of, of course, their wish would be to have final approval, but if there will be a requirement, then they would comply. But it has been a long process for them, of course, I'm sure they would prefer to be able to close this chapter. But, uh, whatever the commission would require would be, they would be open to it.
Yeah, Chair, the, the requirement is actually on, on the commission to complete it and taking action. So that's why we, the department wasn't routinely accepting or requiring Kapa'akais at the time when this was initially submitted. But as the courts have demonstrated, you know, an applicant can get a final subdivision map approval, and if litigating goes to court and put in all those improvements, like you see in one of the Kualakui projects, it can undo the subdivision, it would undo the subdivision, um, even despite, um, investment into the property based on that action, so, you know, ultimately, a, a Kapa'aka is going to have to be required.
So does that become a condition of approval?
No, the department's recommendation would be to defer this item until a Kapa'aka analysis can be provided.
Standard for the commission is to comply with everything imposed by law. Kapa'aka is imposed by law. If it were to be deferred, for how long would it be deferred?
It will be up to the applicant on how long we can, how long would it take them to get the Kapa'aka completed?
For other projects, I know it's been a minimum of six months to get the report. There's not a lot of consultants available. And they're usually all overwhelmed with a long list of projects, so it's just getting in line and waiting for them to complete the report.
And an extension of the six months be reasonable for you at this point?
Probably maybe a year would be required, because, I mean, that's for other, I can't guarantee the six months and then just the, for it to be transmitted to, uh, the planner and doing, and so that the county has time to transmit it to the commission, I think there's additional time required there, not just the time to prepare, so.
We couldn't, if you're okay with it, we could ask for up to a twelve-month deferral, and should they get it completed before?
We could always, of course, I'm sure the owner would go in sooner if available, but I don't want to limit to six months, because I'm not sure in the timeline.
Okay, so if it's up to twelve months, date would be November, November eleventh, twenty twenty-six. If not, any other questions for the applicant? We have any other questions? If not, I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
I move to defer consideration of a subdivision application. S dash twenty nineteen dash four for a term up to a year ending November twelfth, twenty twenty-six.
Second. We got a motion, we got a second, any other comments? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, if we can have a roll call, please?
Roll call, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Strayford?
Aye.
Commissioner Nalas?
Aye.
Commissioner Cole?
Aye.
Motion passes, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The agenda for subdivision, however, being the member of the public asked to testify on previous active items. Miss Cummings, if you want to come up and testify on those agenda items?
Roz, if you could please refer to the subdivision number from the agenda.
Okay.
You have three minutes.
Okay. So first is, uh, S dash twenty twenty-five dash one, Suoka Store Expansion, Commercial Testification in a Flood Zone Without Stormwater Analysis violates the Clean Water Act, section four oh two, and HRS section three forty-three dash five A three, no hydrology report, or EA on file. I'd also like to make sure that we understand there is compliance in HRS section ninety-one dash nine, which requires notice opportunity to be heard and a full evidentiary record. Failure to comply voids administrative decisions, HRS ninety-two sunshine law mandates open meetings, advance public notice, and disclosure of agenda items prohibit secret deliberations. HRS section two oh five state land use law establishes statewide land use districts, county zoning must conform to state classifications and findings of the Land Use Commission, LUC. HRS section two oh five A coastal zone management SMA law requires counties to administer shoreline and special management area permits consistent with coastal protection and policies. HRS six E requires prior consultation with ship D for burials, historic and cultural sites pre, before permit issuance that the record reflect, and on the record for the record that ship D has numerous violations, no trust in ship D. HRS three forty-three section, environmental review law mandates environmental assessment, environmental impact statements for any action or permit with potential environmental effect. Thank you. That's it for that.
Yeah, please read the number.
Second, S dash twenty twenty-five eight dash eight, Calypso Property Subdivision Four Lot Split in Yamalu Falls inside the coastal zone management area, no C Z M review or shoreline determination under HRS section two zero five dash twenty-six, again, governing law, HRS section ninety-one dash nine requires notice opportunity to be heard and full evidentiary record. Failure to comply voids administrative decisions, HRS section ninety-two sunshine law mandates open meetings, advance public notice, and disclosures of agenda items prohibit secret deliberations, HRS section two oh five state land use law establishes statewide land use districts, county zoning must conform to state classifications and findings of the Land Use Commission. HRS section two oh five A coastal zone management SMA law requires counties to administer shoreline and SMA permits consistent with coastal protection policies. HRS section six E, historic preservation requires prior consultation with ship D for burials, historic and cultural sites. Again, at the public record reflect, there is no trust at ship D. HRS section three four three, environmental review law mandates environmental assessment or environmental impact statement for any county action or permit with potential environmental effect. Kauai County Charter, section twenty point two, twenty point three defines the planning commission creation powers and fiduciary obligation to conduct impartial hearings and preserve the record. Uh, constitutional article one, section five guarantees due process and equal protection, article twelve, section seven impose fiduciary stewardship over natural and cultural resources and require protection. Um, this is the record, and I'm done with this particular subdivision application. Thank you. Third, S dash twenty twenty-six dash three, State of Hawaii right, because the state acts as applicant and environmental assessment is mandatory under HRS section three forty-three dash five B, none is posted or cited. Again, for the record, I did see a tablet outside, so I just want this on the record for now. And then again, governing laws, HRS section ninety-one dash nine requires notice opportunity to be heard and full evidentiary record. Um, failure to comply voids administrative decisions, HRS section ninety-two sunshine law mandates open meeting, advance public notice, and disclosure of agenda items prohibit secret deliberations. HRS section two oh five state land use law establishes statewide land use districts, county zoning must conform to state classifications and findings of the Land Use Commission. HRS section two oh five, if this applies, SMA law requires counties to administer shoreline and special management area permits. HRS six E, um, no trust in ship D. It requires for ship D for buried historic and cultural sites before permit issuance, uh, consultation. HRS section three forty-three, environmental review law mandates environmental assessment or environment, environmental impact for any county action or permit with potential envi, environmental ef, uh, effect. Kauai County Charter, section twenty point zero two, twenty point zero three defines the planning commission's creation powers and fiduciary obligation to conduct impartial hearings and preserve the record. Uh, constitutional article one, section five of the State of Hawaii guarantees due process and equal protection, article, um, let's see here, eleven, section one, article twelve, section seven, impose fiduciary stewardship over natural and cultural resources and protection. Mahalo, that's the end of my petition on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. If not, if anything else? Traditionally, I think we have our meetings done on Tuesdays, yeah, but because tomorrow is Veterans Day, I just wanted to, I guess, acknowledge the work of the veterans that we have over here and just to see appreciation for all the service that they have done for our country. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this meeting is adjourned.
Morning, everyone, the time is nine twenty-four, I'd like to call to order the planning commission meeting for Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five. Could we get a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk?
Roll call, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Cole?
Here.
Commissioner Cox?
Here.
Commissioner Nalas?
Here.
Commissioner Tsuka?
Here.
Commissioner Strayford?
Here.
Chair de Gracia?
Here.
Motion passes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, um, is the approval of the agenda, the department recommending a slight adjustment to the agenda for item H one uh, to directly proceed item F four A, being that they're related to the same property.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I'm sorry, sorry.
To follow.
To follow, not to proceed, my, my apologies.
Motion to approve?
Second.
As amended, please.
As amended.
Okay, commissioners, motion on the floor is to approve the amendment of the agenda as suggested by the clerk. Um, any discussion before we take a roll call, um, a voice vote? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Uh, next on the agenda, we have minutes for the meetings of the planning commission, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, as well as September ninth, twenty twenty-five, you can take them together or separate and individual.
Motion to approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting dated August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five and September ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Second, second.
Okay, commissioners, motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes for August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, and also September ninth, twenty twenty-five, any discussion before we go to a voice vote? Hearing none, let's take a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Next, we have no further agency hearings, no new agency hearings, we have continued public hearing Z eight, twenty twenty-six dash one, a bill for an ordinance, minute chapter eight, article twenty-seven of Kauai County Code nineteen eighty-seven as amended relating to the shoreline setback and coastal protection. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend the shoreline setback ordinance by adding safeguards that protect life and property and ensure the longevity and integrity of Kauai's coastal and beach resources along the shoreline. The Kauai County Council is the applicant, we don't. We don't have any members of the public signed up to testify on this agenda item. If there's any other member of the public that would like to testify on this agenda item, please approach the microphone. Seeing none, um, the department doesn't have a director's report update on this one, it was scheduled for November. Um, anticipating that there was going to be a large crowd with other interests on this agenda, we're asking for a deferral to the December, or excuse me, to the January agenda. If there aren't any other further questions, the commission has of this zoning amendment.
Commissioners, seeking a motion?
I move to defer to January twen, to the January twenty twenty-six meeting, consideration of ordinance to amend chapter eight, article twenty-seven, Kauai County Code nineteen eighty-seven as amended relating to shoreline setback and coastal protection, zoning amendment Z A dash twenty twenty-six dash one. Second.
Okay, commissioners, motion on the floor is to defer this agenda item to the January twenty twenty-six meeting, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's take a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
With the next two agenda items, um, because one of them is a potential contest, he's hearing, I'll be stepping down to sit with our attorney in the regular private box, and I'll turn it over to uh, your council, Laura Barzalak, for, of this, taking on these next two items.
Item F four A, new public hearing, county zoning amendment Z A twenty twenty-six two, a petition for a bill to amend ordinance number P M two thousand one three fifty-six as amended in part by ordinance number P M two thousand six three eighty-five to rezone approximately one hundred and seventy-one point seven-two acres of real property situated at Kapalawai Makavelli Island of Kauai, State of Hawaii identified by tax map key four one seven oh oh five oh oh one to the designations that existed prior to ordinance number P M two thousand one three five six as amended, County of Kauai Planning Department. We have transmitted a little public testimony, and I believe that Chair would like to make a statement.
Yeah, thank you everyone for coming today, um, in the last few days, the commission has received a large volume of testimony on this matter, these materials are too voluminous for us to digest, um, prior to making a, uh, taking any action and consider at this meeting, I'll be asking for a motion to defer this madam, matter to the December commission meeting agenda. For those who came by today to testify, we will still take public testimony. At this time, we can pursue, proceed with public testimony.
Okay, so this is on item F four A, the zoning amendment itself, and we have many people signed up to testify, number one is Philip Keat. If you could please approach, you have three minutes, state your name for the record.
Morning, commissioners, I'm Greg Kugel with the David Kiel Law firm, I represent the Robinson Family Partners.
Um, and Mr. Keat will actually testify as part of the, um, property owner's presentation later.
I believe that there's going to be a deferral today, Mr. Kugel, it's up to you if you want to put on your matter today, or if you'd rather wait until the substantive hearing?
We would like to, um, both the property owners, as well as the developer Kirchner, would like to make a presentation today since, since you're here, even if it will be deferred.
I don't think that that is appropriate in the matter of a deferral, we're not going through the substantive process to take action on the zoning amendment today, I'm sorry that you weren't notified of that.
Oh, no, we understood that, but we understood that we would be able to explain our position, we, both, both parties submitted, um, extensive, uh, briefing, which the commissioners probably have not had a chance to read.
You will all be able to, um, assert your position and be given every opportunity, um, to speak, but at this time, I believe we're taking public testimony as required under sunshine. However, I do think that a motion to defer will be considered today, so.
I understand, you're saying the property owner and the developer will not be allowed to testify today.
You're allowed to testify, but if you want to make a substantive presentation with materials, I think you should wait until the substantive hearing. Are you going to be attending if there's another hearing?
I will be.
Okay, and you, you'll put on your matter again?
I, I will make appropriate comments at that time as well.
Okay, well, why don't we go through the volume of public testimony at three minutes right now, and then parties can get up and have, um, a chance to speak? But right now, we're just taking testimony from the public and not party positions.
I, I let Mr. Keat testify there, thank you.
I, I let Mr. Keat testify though, thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Um, it's the first time I've done this, so please be kind to me. Um, I wanted to read my testimony, um, that I submitted. Um, you know, my name is Phil Keat. You mentioned that I am a member of the Robinson family. And I'm vice chair of Robinson Family Partners. I, I'm of the understanding that the planning department wishes to revoke the zoning for the reason of our resort. Zoning for the reason that it's, we've taken too long to bring the resort about. Um, I believe it's important that the commission knows that we've been working diligently on this and consistently. Um, to accomplish this daunting project since nineteen ninety-eight. Um, may I offer you a brief history of our attempts to bring this about? Um, I'll take that as a yes. Um, as some of you may know, our family, uh, which includes our two ranching and farming entities, Gain Robinson. Which manages the land that is owned by Robinson Family Partners. It's all one family, though, in these two entities. Um, we purchased our lands at Makaweli from Victoria Kamamalu in eighteen sixty-five. And we have a royal patent for them. Um, and we purchased it so that we could conduct ranching, which was our, our family's, uh, occupation. And eventually into farming. Um, sugarcane was our primary prop when we got into, to farming. And we stayed in sugar and cattle long after other plantations shut down and, and were last off. And we were the last operating sugar plantation on Kalwai. Um, our last harvest was in two thousand nine. To this day, we, we still provide over three hundred affordably priced homes for our employees, our retirees. And workers in the agricultural area. Um, when other landowners were building hotels, we remained in agriculture. Our mission remains agriculture. It wasn't until mid nineteen eighties when the cost of growing sugar exceeded the prices fixed by the Farm Act. That was really difficult for us, and so my cousin Warren Robinson, the late Warren Robinson, our family's patriarch. Uh, correctly realized that in order to preserve our agricultural roots and operations. And our employees' jobs and housing, that we needed to develop a supplemental source of income. Uh, we first attempted to convert our sugarcane operation into a sustainable energy farm. By using the cane to, to make ethanol and burning the chaff to create electricity. Uh, we spent years trying to bring this about, but without sufficient financing, we were unable to make that happen. Warren Robinson, uh, realized that our old family home at Kapalawai might be the perfect centerpiece for a small-scale resort destination. With this in mind, between nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand nineteen, we sought development partners. However, during those years, the economy was such that no one was building hotels. And, um, we had interest from several major hotel chains that said, well, if you build it, we'll operate it. But, of course, we didn't have the, the sufficient money to build it out. Um, during those years, um.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. That's three minutes, Mr. Chair. Um, at the chair's discretion, you can come up for an additional three minutes at a later time. Or you can reserve the rest of your testimony if this matter is deferred until the next hearing. We have many people signed up and others who would like to speak.
Yes, that's it.
I, I believe when your counsel comes up to make a substantive presentation, that we would be able to afford more time so that you could be fully heard. As to your position. Thank you so much. Mr. Gordon Lebeds?
Good mornings, uh, commissioners, commission staff. My name's Gordon Lebeds. I'm a retired physician. I live in Keikaha. And I visit Pakala Bay every morning, and I'm, um, pretty familiar with the ecology there. And I remember twenty years ago when a different planning staff and a different commission gave this zoning to the Robinsons. As a huge gift. And I remember telling my friends, there's no way they're gonna build a, a hotel and a resort there because it's a s- really inappropriate stupid. Idea, and it's never gonna pencil out. And we just heard so- some of the reason why. But there's about a dozen reasons why this is, this zoning should not be renewed, and I'm just gonna give you one. Um. Pakala Bay is always polluted. It's never normal. It's been tested now for a couple of decades. I can't remember when we've had a normal bacteria count. And the reason is, got a very dirty stream full of cow poop. And you've got a plantation-era camp with coastal septic tanks that leach out into the, into the bay. In, in California, if the bacteria count is thirty-four, the sewage plants come out. And put big yellow signs that say danger, contaminated, stay out, and the lifeguards will tell you to stay out. In Hawaii, the number is one forty, which is a political number, not a scientific number. Pakala always runs between eighty-four and a hundred and fifty. When it rains, it goes up into the thousands. So we know that, that the stream and the camp empty their sewage into the bay. Well, right now, the water's murky all the time, but it's not that bad. The, the turtles eat the algae and the, the. Fish, little fish eat the algae, but if you put a resort there with a hundred toilets. The, talk about not penciling out, you're gonna need a really very, very expensive, high-tech sewage treatment system. Because you can't allow any more sewage to get into that bay. The kind of sewage treatment plant you need doesn't exist in the Hawaiian Islands and the state. Um, they have it in California. Uh, but it, it would have to completely recycle water, or else you would have to get pumps to pump the sewage. Way far away from the beach, and it's just simply not cost-effective. Um, we know that, that, um. Sucralose is, is a artificial sweetener that's, that's, uh, a sign of sewage. And we found sucralose in the water at Pakala Bay, so we know it's contaminated. So I, I'm urging the commission to support the staff and not renew this, uh, zoning. And thanks for listening, and commissioners, thanks for your volunteer work. I've been on commissions before too, and I know it's a lot of work.
Thank you for your testimony.
Rosalyn Cummings? Rosalyn? Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Rosalyn Cummings on the record for the record, um, so this is for Z A dash twenty twenty-six dash one? Is that correct? Cause you can't hear outside, or is this for, uh, dash four? Dash four, okay, so for Z A dash twenty twenty-six dash two, rezone one seventy-one, seventy-two acres of Kapalawai. Let the record reflect, um, the defects of no owner, map, name and notice, no E A, E I S, no ship D. Uh, the record reflects conflict, primary objection, altruism, no authority to alter Aina or Vaivai under kingdom law. Conditional H R S Section three forty-three dash five A one dash five. And H A R eleven dash two hundred one dash eight E I S required before legislative rezone. H R S Section six E forty-two archaeological inventory missing. H R S Section ninety-two, section, uh, ninety-two dash seven A, insufficient agenda specificity. And H R S Section ninety-one dash nine, no director's report in record, object for cause violation, H R S Section three forty-three dash five A. Three, no E I S and conditional art- article eleven, section one. Let the record also reflect, my name is Rosalyn Cummings, and I here to petition under my ohana, the Koualu ohana. Who remain Hua Aina and Hua Oilina Kupuna of Kapalawai Makaweli. Kapalawai is an actual old village. And my concern pertains to the protection of Vaivai on natural resources, which is within the state constitution, and the county must, uh, must comply. Uh, judicial recognition of Takahashi versus William Koualu seventeen Hawaii eighty-six nineteen oh five, decided by the Supreme Court of Territory of Hawaii. Confirming William Koualu, my ancestor, lawful authority to administer, lease and manage land in Makaweli. This record constitutes evidence of pre-state fiduciary title, establishes a continuing trust duty owed to his descendants. And the Gino Ashko continuity of territory marriage record numbers two, six, four, nineteen seventeen, subsequent family archives confirm that Koualu lineage. Through Waimea and Makaweli to be present, um, in the area of Makaweli as a petitioner and cultural continuity. The melee of Maika Aina, who he be composed by William Koualu, preserved by Merica Venapukui, documents intimate knowledge of. William Koualu and our ancestral knowledge from Haupu Nepali throughout the entirety of the Koai Mokupuni, in stewardship of land, water and tradition. In statement, the petitioner respectfully objects for cause to any subdivision, rezoning or land use. Approval that lacks verified chain of title and proof of lawful jurisdiction over ancestral lands and Aina. Fails to conduct required consultation with Lino descendants under H R S Section six E dash forty-two. And I want to just make sure that the record reflects there's no trust in ship D, and they do not supersede our Hua Aina and Hua Oilina rights in protection of all cultural practices. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony.
Stephanie Iona?
Morning. I, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, my name is Stephanie Iona. I am, um, a resident of Waimea with my husband Charlie, and I'm sorry I have to ask him to come up because I, I'm having a bit of a cold with my, and my hearing. I want to keep it simple. Everybody knows me, let's keep things simple. So, um, I want to stand on the testimony that I did, uh, previously send. My career has always been on the west side. I was a general manager of the West, the Waimea Plantation cottages for six years. I worked for Dow Agro Sciences in Kamakani for six years, and for the last eight years, I've been an agricultural consultant to farms on the west side, including Keikaha Egg. I also assisted Mr. Tretheway, the second applicant of, uh, the resort, of a resort that wanted to develop in, um, the Robinson family. So when I look at things, a hundred seventy-one acres is requested of the Robinson family to sustain fifty-two thousand acres of their agricultural land. Why I can speak on that is because as Dow Agro Sciences, I worked with the Robinson family on agricultural improvements. The costs for those improvements were done by national companies. They are in need of a different sustainable project for the west side. So that is the reason why this county had approved in the West Kauai Community Plan, a resort zoning. It also approved, in the many meetings I attended, Waimea four hundred, resort zoning. So all of a sudden, it changed back to egg. Does anybody have a clue, maybe Jerry O'Nellis does, on what agriculture costs to do in Hawaii? Farming, shipping, everything that goes along with it. Why do you think people like Hartong just gave up everything in Keikaha? Hartong is closed, Beck's closed, Dow Agro Sciences merged with, with Dupont Pioneer. We didn't leave, we just merged. Agricultural jobs are in jeopardy. So you want to take a resort back to egg when they already have fifty-two thousand acres in egg? This doesn't make any sense. I'm just a simple person that's trying to say, what does this do as a hotel? I was hotel manager when I got to them. I said I thought it was necessary, three hundred jobs, workplace housing. Everything that everyone talks about in this county that you've got to do, and you want to take that away from a family like the Robinsons, who have done nothing but support this island. And I can tell you, when Hana was flooding, everybody should remember who came on that beach with that barge. It was the Robinsons. They worked months, hours, days delivering food to Honolulu. And how I know? Because I helped provide half that food. So I think you all have to take a check on what is really going on. Nobody understands how suffering the west side is doing. And I know because when you go to Waimea, big save, my husband's probably gonna say, hon, calm down. And I asked the manager, why are you separating the celery stalks? And you know why? Because those seniors can't afford a bunch of celery. People I know because I provide food to the West Kai, West Kauai, um, community. So I'm asking you again to please look at this hard. West Kauai Community Plan and Waimea four hundred, by this county, was approved resort zoning for over twenty years. How do I know? I testified. So your predecessors who agreed, all of a sudden have no say? So I just wanted to share with you that if anybody needs to understand what community outreach is. Look at the Robinsons and the families that support that west side and this entire island. This company has agreed to provide community outreach. And I'm telling you, the west side needs it. If you don't believe me, try looking at what's happening with the SNAP benefits. So anyway, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I just wanted to give you a dose of reality with regard to what's going on in the west side. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Iona. I wanted to comment also that I received some late submitted papers. I don't know who submitted them. With signatures, they are late testimony. If you would like them to be considered by the commission after this meeting, if you could please provide them to the clerk. We'll be sure that they're copied and disseminated to the commissioners, but, um, they will not be considered at this meeting. So we're not turning back your testimony or turning back any of your submissions, but please make sure that you turn them in so that they can be copied and distributed. Thank you. Next is Randall, uh, Sky. I'm sorry, I can't read your handwriting.
Is it Luihara?
Uh, it looks like an S, and it looks like a Randall. I'm sorry. Make that out. Anybody here named Randall?
There are Randalls here.
There's no other Randall. Yes.
Is this already on, this one?
Yeah, yes, please, uh, state your name, sir, and you have three minutes to testify.
Uh, my name is Randall Luihara, and I, I've, uh, worked. And lived on the west side, specifically working for the, started with the plantation. Um, and then worked for the ranch. I got hired by Selwyn Warren, I mean, Selwyn Robinson Warren's father. And, um, it was because he knew that there was, would be transition. From sugar to other types of agriculture and industries. Anyway, I, I came to support the extension of the, uh, process. For permitting this, uh, development. Because, uh, living on the west side, I know we need something. I mean, we're not talking about a big hotel with a multi-story u- unit. We're talking about low-density cottage-type, uh, accommodations for visitors. As well as residents, because when the, uh, cottages in Waimea became available. At any given time, there's quite a few local people staying there because they're visiting from another island. Or having a birthday party, or simply taking advantage of the, um. Opportunities to enjoy that type of atmosphere. So, uh, I also surf. I know there's a lot of my friends who are against this extension. But it's simply to extend the permitting process, as I understand it. And other approvals will have to be done and looked at by the planning commission. So, real quickly, the reason why we need to have this development is, for one, we need parking. There's a hundred cars on the highway when the surf's up, and it's dangerous. People block traffic waiting for somebody to move so they can park on the highway, on the side of the highway. We do need parking, we need bathrooms. I mean, Gordon was talking about sanitation in the water. For I don't know how many years, we, we, you know, every so often, we have to round up the cattle in that area. And ride on horseback through those bushes and trees that the people walk through. And we see diapers, toilet paper in the bushes, all sorts of rubbish. And, um, even camping gear that, um, people leave behind. And so a bathroom would be, uh, necessary. We need showers. We need, uh, security. There's been. We need uh security. There's been unsolved murders on the west side. And you know, they found one poor woman in the shoreline. Uh I forget how many years ago that was.
Sir, um that's been three minutes. If you could please wrap up your testimony.
Wow, that was pretty fast. Anyway, at the very least. We should extend the time for the um, I guess, the. Applicants to um have their proposal. Uh spied by this commission. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
After all testimony is complete, if anybody would like another three minutes, it will be at the chair's discretion. Helena Huffman.
Hi, I'm Helena Huffman. This is my first time doing this, but I just want to say that. It's amazing to hear everyone's story and like all the sides of this. Um I'm not a surfer, but I am born and raised on in Kalahau. Um and I just want to say that instead of viewing this um. Situation as something that could divide us, I think it's a great opportunity for unification. I think I see everyone's heart that they want to do the best with this um acre acreage as well as the west side's economy. I just have to question if um development is the right way to use it. Um once we do develop this, it can't go back, you know? And um just because it may be a small property now that's developed. In the future, it might be different. And I think we should have the responsibility to think of that. Um I do understand the concerns with agriculture as well and it's costly. However, I think there's a major swing towards ecotourism. And if we do have possibly an agricultural um driven structure. That possibly we could bring back the heart of hospitality, not from us just simply serving tourists. With a fake smile on our faces, but perhaps sharing them how to tend for the land. And steward it properly. That is in a way that cycles back and benefits the community that lives there. Um if we are really talking about jobs as well. Um thinking about not just a way of keeping. The Hawaiian people and like the Hawaiian society in um. Like lower paying jobs such as housekeeping, but possibly like garnering their um skills and talents. To um, I don't know, not climb a ladder, but do more than just um cleaning rooms. Because they are people and we are people. Um and then lastly, looking back at the history of the stewardship of the land. I see that surfers and um possibly the Robinsons have not done their best to take care of the property. And I just want us to think about if it wasn't stored before, um how do we think that they.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, steward it in the future. So let's take an opportunity to think about good stewarding of this resource that we've been given. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Glance Yoshida?
Hi, my name is Glance Yoshida and this is my first time to doing this, contrary to what you guys might think, but um. Uh I I admire the county for taking the position of revoking the permit or at least um. Taking a stronger look at it and so like Doc was saying about the. The pollution in the water, I do surf out there. Um I'd like to just show of hands from the surfers on the water. How many of you guys have seen sharks out there on a fairly regular basis? So the the pollution in the water does attract sharks and we surf with sharks all the time. The majority of us wear shark bands for protection. Um they don't necessarily. We don't know hundred percent that they work, but if we hear that there's a shark in the water, we exit immediately. It's just not a conducive place for tourists to come. The Robinsons do have a lot of land. I mean, if we do have to consider um changing the permitting requirements, how about they go up Ma'aka? Um where they're overlooking the ocean, where it's beautiful. Um. The the shore is lined with kiabi trees. We have to walk through the path with thick shoes on. Otherwise, you can get seriously poked. And I'm sure. Most of the people have had that experience as well. So there's the sharks, there's the kiabid. Also, the. The Robinson family, I did submit written testimony. Um. Fifty-five year plus years ago, my dad hiked in from the Waimea stream along with us. To go on a surf trip at P'kala. And my dad was corralled by the sheriff and taken to the Robinsons' house. And grilled about um what he was, he had camera equipment. He was a photographer, made surf movies and stuff. So he was grilled like, what are you going to do with this film? Who's going to see it? Uh what's going to happen to it? He, they were very, very, so they made it very, very clear that. They didn't want publicity for the land, for their property.
Thirty seconds, please, thirty seconds.
Yeah, okay. They didn't want publicity. They didn't want people to know about it. So. It it it's just such a big change in their their beliefs. To want to publicize and have this resort development. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony.
Bruce Place, please.
Good enough. Everybody can hear me now. Bruce Place for the record. Um I have two segments to go through, so I can go through uh. Ask for three minutes after this to cover the second segment, or I will come back. The uh first segment has to do with the ordinance. I'll read part of it. Substantial construction of the hotel defined as completion of at least fifty percent of the building foundations. Shall be completed within eighteen months from the date that the appeal of the project shoreline certification. Currently pending before the Chair of the Board of Land and Natural Resources has been resolved. If substantial construction is not completed within this time, the planning commission shall initiate proceedings to rezone the property. To the designations prior to the date of this ordinance. This is from October twenty-six, two thousand and seven, the Kapalawai Annual Status Report. Um I was the one that did the appeal. In my um judgment, that was in April of two thousand and six. A shoreline certification is only good for one year. That would end if the was resubmitted in February of two thousand and six. There's no information as to when it was approved. And there's no information as to how my appeal went. In my mind, it seems that because a shoreline certification is only good for one year, my appeal is dead for one year, done in one year. Therefore, this is resolved. And by law, it has to go back to ag and open. They have not met that ordinance. Um the um, okay, I'm gonna, I asked for thirty seconds too. Okay, I'll just go on to the second one right now because that's basically the gist of what I have to say. This should have been done twenty years ago. Because they didn't meet that. The other one is that this area in two thousand was in the hundred-year flood, hundred-year flood zone. And that has not changed. If the water comes to the top, to the bottom of the bridge, seventy percent of this hundred and seventy acres. Will be flooded. If it goes halfway up the eleven-foot mark, it will flood thirty percent. Of the area. So that has not changed. Hurricane inundation. Now, these uh are, these ones I'm quoting are from the final EIS. Um the hurricane inundation zone, the back in the EIS and in two thousand and five. It was only inland overwash from.
Seconds, Mr. Place.
From storm surge associated with Hurricane Aniki, which was between ten and a hundred feet. Currently, the hurricane inundation zone is the entire parcel and is evacuation would be needed. Tsunami in two thousand, two thousand and five, there was no mention of tsunami. Now, the entire parcel is an evacuation zone.
Mr. Place, three minutes is up, but you'll have more time when you bring the next agenda item concerning this project.
Um I don't get six mi- we don't get six minutes on each item yet.
We're going to call, I believe, for the next item.
For the next item and then I'll have three minutes to go forward. And then I'm open for any questions you have.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Bonnie Bator?
Mahalo, Monday. Mahalo Gerald and everyone for serving. Um. I'm urging this planning commission to.
State your name.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Bonnie Bator and um Kiana Aina, Kaya Komalie, Kele Iko. Kai and Obelos. I'm a great grandmother. Um. Governor Green just was mentioning with this whole snap trip thing that uh, you know, we have, we import eighty-five percent. Of our food. And I'm sorry, I didn't have any handkerchiefs and tissues for the Robinson family earlier crying about that. Um please revoke the permit and I urge this commission not to renew. And um I back up and support everything Rosalyn Cumming said and mahalo for listening to the public. And again, to quote our esteemed Governor Green, we import eighty-five percent of our food. And so agriculture, I think it's a good thing. You know, I remember when the Woolsworth. Was right over there and that nice Japanese restaurant there in the Moki Eha where the mayor is. And uh, you know, there was a laundromat over there and a Japanese restaurant and um, you know, the gridlock traffic. I mean, and then all the sewage sludge from all this proposed development. G seventy is here, I see as a consultant for this project. They're also here for the nine hundred acres beside uh Kapaa Middle School. And uh four hundred and forty-two acres in Hanama Ulu. It's the same consultant, but unless we get some infrastructure catching up. Um we're not in a very good situation. Our EMTs, my heart goes out to them with, you know, the traffic, gridlock. And all our frustrated residents. Mahalo for your valuable time and for making the correct decision. Mahalo Nui.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Keiko Landstall. No, Keiko will will pass on her testimony. Anna Shar? Anna Shar? Not here. Uh Sorin Valice? Anna Shar?
Hannah Sklar.
Pleasure, Sklar. Hi, you have three minutes to testify. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to start off with a sentiment. May the life of the land be perpetuated in righteousness. Hello, I'm Hannah. I'm a surfer and a teacher on the west side of Kauai at Ke'kaha Elementary School. And it is both a privilege and my honor to serve the children on the west side. And be a part of a community that has given me a life fulfilled in purpose and has taught me a lot. I stand before today in favor of Kapalavai returning back to its agricultural land. But furthermore, I'd like to shift to an objective of not just returning back to ag land, but to see to it. That this dispute need no longer happen. From the readings of previous counties' planning agendas, history reminds us that several attempts of this development. Spanning over the last twenty years have tried and failed. Perhaps this is not a coincidence, but rather a lesson. The land of the west side in Kapalavai is home to the Hawaiian horay bat, a native and endangered species. That lives and roosts in the Kapalavai trees. Fishing with my friends in Kapala at sunset, I can see them flying over the tree canopies. This critically endangered bat not only finds sanctuary here, but uses these treetops to reproduce. They particularly like these trees to be around fifteen feet in their canopies. They play a vital role in the ecosystem here in the precious Kapalavai. And this land, as we can see, offers more than just economic potential. It offers life, it offers balance, and it's a place worth protecting. For me, surfing here has brought peace to my mind and quiet to my soul. And my time spent in the water continues to teach me these lessons about persistence, about resilience and about respect. And it is these same values I wish to pass on to my students and my children one day. We are strengthened in our unity and our respect and our stewardship for West Kauai. And for the sake of the west side community, our environment, and the dignity of protecting a place worth worth protecting. I ask you when making decisions for the beauty and the peacefulness of West Kauai. Are we creating a Kauai in which we want our children's children to grow up in? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Sorin Valice.
Hello, I'm Sorin Valice. As I said, um I mean, I I agree with a lot of the sentiments on both sides actually. But um as to the zoning, it seems as if rezoning it to a resort designation. Was somewhat of an error, but maybe not at the time. But I think currently. A resort zoning doesn't fit on one of the last sort of undeveloped shorelines that has any reasonable accessibility. Um to say nothing of kind of the water, water quality concerns and. Um kind of the suitability of it for a resort, given what's in the water there. Um both uh creatures and bacteria. Um and I, I kind of think. In the current situation that Hawaii finds itself in of shipping in so much food. Keeping ag land ag should be of utmost importance. And in my mind, in my way of thinking, the only possible justifiable reason to. Take ag land and zone it for anything else would be to create housing for working families here, not resorts. That's all.
Thank you for your testimony.
Pearl Angov? Pearlingo for the record, um I would just like to say that the Robinsons, if they want to cry about um. Money to uh keep their agricultural land, perhaps they could find a way to profit from their branch land. And also they could start profiting from the hydro plant, um which they have cut off many streams that I have witnessed. Um I am deeply concerned that approving a resort at this location would contravene the spirit and let's. The spirit and letter of the law. It would not promote the most beneficial use of the land, consonant with good zoning practices per section forty-six dash four. But instead promote transient commercial profit at the expense of community resilience and agricultural stewardship. Resort zoning does not equal true economic benefit. The claim that a resort brings local jobs and investment overlooks that much of the profit. Leaves the island and the kind of employment offered often does not provide land ownership or long-term security for local families. What we need is land use to feed and sustain our community, agricultural, open space, local enterprise. Not another resort that may leave when market conditions change. Sustainable resort is a false promise. The idea that luxury resort development can be small-scale, culturally culturally integrated, community-led. Rarely plays out. The infrastructure, visitor numbers, imported materials, higher waste and resort and resource use. All of that undermines the values of the west side. Connection to the land, the rhythms of nature, community stability. The genuine sustainable vision lies in returning to agriculture and open zoning zo- and open space zoning. Not layering luxury tourism on top of fragile environments. Long-term planning has shifted. While previous zoning may have accepted resort use, we now face climate change, water scarcity, affordable housing crisis. now face climate change, water scarcity, affordable housing crisis, and cultural erosion. The long-term plan needs to reflect these realities, not enforce old models of growth. If the county's general plan now prioritizes food sovereignty, affordable housing, environmental resilience, then rezoning for resort may conflict with those goals and thus conflict with the statutes requiring to guide the overall future development of the county per section forty-six dash four. Please deny the po- the proposed zoning amendment and instead approve the designation of this one hundred and seventy-one point seven-two acre parcel in Kapala Vai Makaweli as agricultural open space. This is not a rejection of opportunity, it is a choice for a different kind of opportunity, one that actually serves local families, nourishes the land, protects the heritage, and aligns with both state law and community priorities.
I have about thirty seconds.
I ask that you listen to the voices of the local people, not only the voices of capital. Protect what makes Kauai sacred. Say no to another resort and yes to agriculture, to open space, to the future we can proudly pass on to our keiki. Mahali, mahalo, mahalo Nui Loa. For your time, your aloha and your dedication to this island's well-being.
Thank you for your testimony.
Kua Young.
Hello, Kua Young. What else do you guys need to know? Where I'm from, Poi Pu, uh, testifying to turn it back into ag. I am from the south side and I seen development of, uh, or the building of resorts and tourism changed the south side where we can't afford homes in anywhere. And wherever tourism goes, so does inflation. So, I'm totally against that. We need to find another way to make the west side easier for people to have a job. And I don't think building resorts the answer. Done.
Thank you for your testimony.
Kanani Santos.
Hi, everybody. Kanani Santos, um, from Hana Pepe, born and raised. Uh, Pakalas, I love dearly. I hold it close to my heart, surf there a lot throughout the year. Um, my dad's born and raised Port Island camp. And we like to keep some of the west side, west side. Um, like Kua said, the development on the south side got out of control. And with that development, more people come in, more, you know, like to keep the west side, west side, keep, keep something we have, you know, the roots, the culture, um, that beautiful view that I have from the ocean looking back at the coastline. Pakala is one of the last camps that there is here in Hawaii. It's, it's a beautiful place, very sacred. Walking along the beach to Pakala Vai is, is, is nice. No one's there. Few, uh, footprints in the sand. It's, it's a beautiful place, very sacred. And, um, just like to keep it's own as agriculture. Thank you very much. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony.
Kelly Hughes. Kelly Hughes or Kelly Hughes?
State my name. I'm Kelly Hughes. I'm very nervous. I don't think it's hard to speak here, but I just want to say, um, I agree with, um, the last two speakers one hundred percent and please keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Jim Pilgrim. Jim Pilgrim. Jim is not here. Barbara Wedener.
Aloha, everyone. My name's Barbara Wedener. Thank you for your service. I'm here today, rearranged my schedule, and this is the first time I've addressed you guys, but, um, I just feel so strongly about keeping that area ag land and wild. Um, I'm an environmental educator and so teaching the children about preserving special pa- places, I go into the classroom and we talk about that. And I just think it's really important that we don't have another resort. I don't feel that we have, who's gonna build the resort? Who's gonna, where are those workers gonna, um, live? And I'm a former business owner. I had mermaid cleaning service for twenty years and I had to dissolve that business because the labor shortage, um, cut into my, uh, my profits too much and I could no longer do that. But I just feel that this isn't the right, um, fit for our beautiful island. And I believe our tourists come to our gorgeous island for the reason that we have these open spaces, that Kauai's still wild and, um, very, very, very special. And I really feel strongly about keeping it that way. Thank you for your times.
Thank you for your testimony.
Luisa Wooten. Luisa?
Hello, good morning. Uh, my name is Luisa Wooten. Um, I didn't prepare anything for this testimony, but I've heard some very awesome testimony, um, for us to take the zoning back to ag. I'm a farmer. I know that agricultural jobs and being a farmer is, as Jerry knows it, you know, everyone can talk about it, but if you actually live it, it's a whole different, a whole different story. But that being said, I'm also a surfer. I've been surfing at Pakala since nineteen seventy-five. My husband and I go over there at least once a week during the summer months, whether there's surf or not. We have family in Keikaha. My daughter Anne Wooten and our son-in-law, Robert Westerman, live there in, in Keikaha. And, um, I believe also, as has already been said, that there was some mistakes made when the zoning was first changed from ag to resort. I also believe that we have more than enough resorts and we're bringing the type of tourist here that doesn't really appreciate old Hawaii and they come with an entitlement that is unbelievable to me. My own home surf spot, uh, Kahili and near Kilauea is just overrun with colorful Jeeps and people that take up the parking and come down that gravel road with dust flying and land there and everybody better get out of the way. And I would hate to see that at Pakala. The, that, the points that have been made about the, the tsunami in the date, in the sa- inundation zone and, and the polluted water. I was a member of the Blue Water Task Force for Surf Rider for years and Pakala was always like off the charts, off the charts. And now we're gonna bring in a two hundred and fifty-room resort and add more to that? How are you gonna handle that, that sewage? I just, I just hope that, you know, I, I look forward to the next hearing and I hope we all have room to have a good seat because some people are leaving, uh, because they can't sit down. But I believe this is a real turning point and, you know, I just want to repeat, it always seems to go, you don't know what you have till it's gone. And once it's gone, we can't get it back. So, thank you for listening and thank you for your service. All right. Aloha.
Thank you for your testimony.
Michael Farago. Michael Farago.
Good morning. My name's Michael Farago. Just a couple comments. It's a lot to digest. Um, I'm relatively new to the island, been here ten years. One of the reasons I can't leave is because of the area in question, uh, strong spiritual connection, recreational, there's a lot of things that we all love about it and everybody who's clearly commented here today, a lot, most people, everyone cares about the resource in question has said, it's a special place. And both sides are looking at what's best for the place in question for all of us who enjoy it. Over fifteen hundred pages to digest in the, uh, public comments that are available online in the agenda. And as was said before, too volumous, uh, really to go over right now, which is why we're being deferred to December. On that point, it, I think with everyone who was here, um, maybe would have been, uh, good to hear a substantive presentation that was gonna be done by the other side and both sides, so we could get a clear understanding and in that way we communicate better with each other.
We will be taking substantive comments.
Okay, okay. Well, um, with that being said, um, clearly, a lot of people comment, love the place like myself. Resort zoning, however, that's what everyone's pushing back. And one of the common points I was reading throughout all the comments is that, uh, it would create jobs. But what kind of jobs are these that are being created? We already have a lot of these jobs that can't be filled right now that are on island in the hospitality and the hotel industry. So, creating more hotel jobs, is that gonna keep the younger generations on island? Is that gonna be enough for them to pay for housing? I mean, these are not the jobs that clearly we've been doing as a county and as a state for decades now, well even before the original zoning was granted. These are the jobs that haven't worked. So, while we have all parties here, uh, the family, Robinsons and their representatives, I really think we all need to start communicating about what is the proper way to move forward. Going back to ag land as is, letting that land-
Thirty seconds.
-deteriorate, which it is. There are still native birds there, native mammals, one of the only two that still exist in the state. There's still cultural resources there. There's still the old house from eighteen ninety-eight. That's a lot of layers of history that all of us could appreciate, maybe developing this so we could all, as a community, come together, be stewards of it. And Robinson family looking at a way where you could benefit from that. There could be consulting with D L N R, which we only had one comment from their preservation committee, but not from the aquatic, nor from the land resource management department. Like a feasibility study done perhaps, like was done in Mahalapu back in two thousand and seven, but that never got commented on any further. And that was at the behest of Senator Nui.
Three minutes, sir. I'll make another call.
Thank you. But I appreciate it. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, Mr. Jim Pilgrim is now here. Mr. Pilgrim? Good morning, sir. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to testify.
Should I sit down? Hi, my name is James Pilgram, P I L G R A M. I've been a resident of the island for about thirty-five years and, uh, Pakala is one of my favorite spots on the island. I am a surfer. I don't surf a lot, but when I can, I do. I've been to surf resorts and, uh, in other places and I see what has happened with, um, all the people that end up showing up there and it, I don't know, I, um, I didn't come with a prepared remark and I'm sorry, I'm a little, but everything everyone has said and all the reasons why they shouldn't renew is, I mean, they're all valid points and I think that they should be very, uh, taken into consideration. Food is a big problem. Cost of food on this island is ridiculous and there's no reason why we can't grow it here and using that land to do it would be a really good thing. Thank you very much. Aloha.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll take one more testimony and we'll go into a ten-minute recess.
Coral Vernon. Coral? Coral Vernon. Coral is not here. At this time, we're gonna enter into a recess. For those of you who would like to speak for an additional three minutes, you may at, at the chair's discretion. And please do not make your testimony duplicative if you've already made your comments. We've heard them, you don't need to state them again. If you would like to add something, then you may. And also, what you just testified on is the zoning amendment. And many of you are also signed up to testify for the petition for revocation. So, I see many of the same names. If you have something you'd like to discuss specifically on the petition for revocation, please stay and give your testimony. But if it is just to reiterate what you've already said, then, um, we don't take duplicative testimony generally. So, with that, we'll take a ten-minute recess. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erin McKenzie. Um, I live in Hana Pepe. Um, I work at the hospital west side. I've only been here about five years, so obviously, most of this stuff predates me. But I feel very passionately, um, since living on the west side and working with the people at the hospital, um, about the community. I love working with, um, the kapuna at the hospital and, um, I love surfing at Pakala. It's where I learned to surf. So, obviously, it's kind of a personal thing for me, like a lot of other surfers, um, but I've been trying to think about it a little bit more objectively. I think about, um, the, uh, the lack of workers right now, um, on the island and, you know, obviously, if we add another resort, where are we gonna get those workers or are we gonna ship them in like one hotel did? I do understand that there will be some housing, um, in the proposed, um, resort. However, not enough for a two hundred and fifty-room, you know, proposed resort. It's been kind of compared to the Waimea cottages, but that's only fifty-nine cottages compared to two hundred and fifty rooms, um, proposed. So, obviously, much more of a environmental impact, um, social impact, cultural impact. So, um, the way I see it, it's a little too much. Also, I think just the idea of, um, bringing more resorts to the island seems a little tone deaf right now in the year of twenty twenty-five compared to maybe in two thousand, which of course, like I said, that's the year I graduated from high school in Maryland. I wasn't here. I don't, you know, understand, um, what was going on at that time. But right now, in twenty twenty-five, um, we're in a very different situation. Um, obviously, government shutdown, um, a lot more frustration with residents over, over tourism, um, the fires in Lahaina. Um, I'm just sort of a, a little baffled, um, that there is an argument for, um, not, not keeping it ag or open space. So, um, but I guess one of the last things is, you know, this is gonna be, if it is a resort, um, the money's gonna go to foreign investors. It's not really helping the local economy. So, a Dubai investor, um, it's, I think it just rubs most people the wrong way. Obviously, um, really need to be putting more money into our west side community, um, instead of outside interests. And I think that's pretty much it. I mean, echo pretty much what everyone else said on this issue. Um, I'm just here to support our local community and thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony.
Keith Nita? Keith Nita?
Good morning. Please, please press that white button right on that microphone.
For those members of the public who would like to see this testimony, it will be made available on the white table in the corner. Yes, Mr. Nita.
Yes, alright. Uh, good morning, members of the planning commission and everyone in this room, um, my name is Keith Nita. And I was the county planner for this project and I'm the one that drafted the ordinance, so just. Um. You know, after thinking about it, the thing that stands out in my mind with this particular project is still. Condition three T is very problematic because uh. It was not inserted by the planning department, it was a county council condition when the zoning was adopted by the council. So. That particular condition is probably the reason why everybody's here. And. One of my contentions is that I feel that this condition shouldn't have been imposed because you don't impose. Substantial construction conditions in zoning amendments, because what it does, it. Creates a cloud on the vesting of the zoning. So, um. The reason I feel it shouldn't belong in this ordinance is that, um, first of all, it's a permitting condition. It should not be a condition of zone, because it puts a cloud, because zoning to me is the most highest form of vesting. Of entitlement for land use. Because it's adopted by law. Yeah, so to put a cloud on it, it's like saying I guarantee but not guarantee. And it, 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 it's the highest form of vesting to me, so, um. Uh, I think, the reason we're in this room is because that condition was imposed, which it shouldn't have been imposed, so that's my main point. Um. But now, you know, the issue of, um, the property not being developed. I just would like to point out that Kauai has approximately about forty-five hundred hotel rooms. In reserve, there's zoning on the island for forty-five hundred more hotel rooms, but not, not the. It hasn't been developed yet. But we have that in reserve. And I believe the west side only has less than one percent of the total inventory of Kauai's resort units. The next thing I would like to point out in my testimony is that, um, initially, when the zoning was being presented to the county. This project was presented to the county by the Robinsons, so. There was skepticism, but an extremely high amount of support for the zone. At that time, this is in two thousand. And it's mainly because Keke Sugar. Closed and I think G N R Sugar was in. Kind of questionable state, whether it was survival or not, so a lot of the testimony came from the local people on the west side. And a typical testimony from the public was. I wanna keep the west side west side, but I'm not thinking of myself, I'm thinking of my family, my kids. They need a job, they need some kind of opportunity and they felt that, um, resort development would do that. Would it, it remains to be seen, but the, the support for the project. Came from a more like a we perspective versus a I perspective.
Mr. Nita, three minutes, um, but we'll call for additional testimony at the end.
Okay. You, 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 I'm sorry, you want me to continue or?
Yeah, well, well, you can continue your testimony after we've taken the rest of the.
Okay.
Those who signed up.
Yeah, oh, thank you, thank you. Um.
So, Mr. Nita.
So there was an extreme amount of support, yeah?
If you can conclude now.
Oh, I have to go.
And then we'll invite you.
Aloha.
We'll, we'll call you right back.
So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mahelani Chandler. Mahelani Chandler. Please state your name for the record, you have three minutes to testify.
My name is Mahelani Chandler, better known as Honey Girl. Um, I'm twenty-five years old, a new mom and a lifelong surfer. Pakala is one of my home spots, my surf spots, a place where I find peace, healing and connection to my kupuna. My genealogy comes from this aina and every wave, every breeze carries the stories of those who came before me. I stand in a strong opposition to any development near Pakala. Our aina is not just land, it is our ancestor. These sands hold Evi Kupuna, our history and our future. Every generation has a responsibility to protect it, not to sell it for profit or build over sacred ground. Once it's gone, we can never bring it back. As a new mother, I think about the world my child will inherit. I wanna, I want her to grow up knowing clean water, open spaces and the sound of the ocean. Not more resorts, fences and sewage fields. Development here does not serve the people of Kauai, it only benefits those who see this place as business, not a home. I urge you, say no to this development near Pakala. Protect this aina for the next generation, for our keke, for our kupuna and for the spirit of this place that has cared for us since the beginning. Mahalo for listening and for standing with what is pono. Mahalo, you guys.
Thank you for your testimony.
Megan Wong.
Hey. Aloha. I'm Megan Wong, um. I'm born and raised Kanakamali from Kauai and I'm here to strongly oppose any development at Pakala's. The aina is sacred and my genealogy and my family's history are tied to this land, the ocean. And Pakala is not just a coastline, it's kupuna, it is a memory, it is identity. When we protect this place, we protect who we are. And I have to ask, who really benefits from this development? It seems like some of the same people pushing the Hanamalulu project are also behind this one. Hmm, I wonder who's making money from it, because it sure isn't the local families who live here. We don't get paid to be here, we take time away from our work, our families to show up. Because we care about the bigger picture, protecting aina for the next generation. Looking only at dollar and not the lessons of our kupuna is short thinking, our ancestors taught us to think seven generations ahead. Not just for today and not, definitely not for the profit. We've heard all the same promises before, more jobs, more opportunities, responsible growth, but look around. Look at Poipu, look at Oahu, what has happened? Overdevelopment, traffic, sewage, displacement, broken promises, that's not progress, that's destruction. Pakala should never become another resort or development zone. It is a living cultural landscape that needs protection, not profit. So I'm saying it loud and clear, no to development near Pakala's, protect the aina for our keke, our kupuna and the generations still to come. Mahalo for your time, making decisions and please make a decision that reflects what is pono, Megan. Aloha.
Thank you for your testimony.
The last person signed up is Monica Atros.
Aloha, Chair, um, Honorable Commissioners. For the record, Monica Atros, I'm not here, uh, I'm not hired by the client or the applicant. I don't work for them. Um, I just wanted to say some things I think the record should reflect. Just from what I know as Kanakuivi from Kauai for, I mean, since before there was paper. And. So anyhow, I'll just get to it, you know, nowhere, and I, I've read John Papa E. Samuel Kamakau, David Malo, Mary Kaveno Fukui, ev- everything numerous times for decades, my whole life. Um, nowhere in any of the history that our own. Hawaiian scholars wrote, will you find one sentence that says development equals desecration? Not one. Uh, this is not, the issue is not about development, it's about bad development and good development. But Hawaiians developed. Anybody who's been in Kalalau knows, we did more with wood and rocks and other people's bones. Than people can do now with machinery. We did it all, we moved water. We moved rocks from other Ahu'kau'au to make He'au, those are the best, that's the highest degree of technological advancement these islands have. There's no metal here, so we did everything. Um. When, when anti-staff and people talk about economics, it's not profit. Economics is a fundamental consideration Hawaii, because that's what. Underlaid the overthrow. It was the inability to pay the McKinley Tariff Act, it was tariffs. Sugar was not profitable, no one could live on it, and so they overthrew the government. If you make Hawaii part of the United States, you don't need to pay tariff. That's it. What I'm hearing today kind of. Is concerning and it's heartbreaking. Because whatever my own personal opinions are about the Robinsons, whatever my own personal opinions are about the west side, I'm from the east side. I, I was raised in a Kauai where you respected other people's kuleana. Yeah, Hawaiians ain't gonna other Ahu'kau'au for no reason and make their opinions known. The Robinsons have preserved ag land, the Robinsons have preserved language, the Robinsons have preserved community. The Robinsons have preserved culture, that's what they've done. It's not my kuleana to tell them what to do, because they talked to Victoria Kamamalu a hundred and sixty-one years ago. And convinced her. What have they done? To this day, my decency still, I feel in the back of my neck, I don't really go surf Pakala's, that's not my zone. The Robinsons have a annual, um. Community organi- you know, like a community party thing. I went there a couple of years back, I was invited, it was really nice of them to do that. And they had a surf contest, only time in my life I ever surfed out in front of Kamakani, I wouldn't dare go there. I don't know anybody there. And to be able to surf there and do that, I was so appreciative. And it's not, and, and so, I guess what I'm trying to say is like, if anyone knew if ag could be done, it'd be the Robinsons. People talk about ag, I remember working county, people talk about ag, but they don't want corn. People talk about ag, but they don't want cows. You know, people talk about su- su- sugar. Maui, they, they're over burning sugar already, you can't do sugar anymore. So these people have, it's not just fifteen hundred acres or whatever in Kauai, it's all of Ni'ao. How do you take care of these people?
Three and a half.
So, in short, it's like, I'll close up right now. Whether people like it or not, we need houses, we need a way of life. The only way to do it, it's so expensive, is to entitle bigger projects and take the exactions, that's it. It's not a, from my understanding, it's not a two hundred and fifty, you know, hotel, it's a hundred thirty-four, you know. I mean, take your time, I'm glad you're, you're considering this stuff. But really, I, I don't, I don't want the Robinsons to be seen as the evil developer, I, I'm the evil developer, I got clients that are the evil developer, but they're just an Ohana. They're the family, they're the west side too. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Chair, that's everyone who has signed up, um, is there anyone who would like to testify who has not had three minutes to testify? Sorry?
Revocation.
No, we haven't moved on to the revocation, which is item H one, we're still on the zoning amendment right now. Is there anyone who hasn't testified on the zoning amendment who would like to testify? For the first time.
Okay, is there anybody who would like additional time to testify for this, uh, for the zoning amendment? Okay, I believe it's, uh, Mr. Please.
You have an additional three minutes, you can approach.
Please hit the, the white button on the mic. Right on the top.
Okay, Bruce Place for the record. Um. Some points, this is not an area to develop due to flood, hurricane. And tsunami zones, okay, it's dangerous. The largest landowner in this island. Should have a hundred and seventy acres. Um, available in open zoning that is not agriculture, it's not anything that is in a better place. That is out of the flood, hurricane and tsunami zones. Then all you will see me here for is to say, I really don't want to resort in the west side, because, yeah, I like to keep the west side west side. Uh, the historical importance of this place goes from one day ago to as far back as you can go. This is in an extremely important cultural Hawaiian area, is an extremely important history of the Robinsons. That needs to be done. The trap, you, they talking about jobs, how many jobs there are, we need jobs out there. Two thousand, I walk across that road a lot, because I park, I live Kekeha, turn around and I drive back home. Because I walk across that road, twenty years ago. The traffic moved from the west side to the east side, going down to the resorts, work, that was where everybody in the west side had to work. Now you go across, the last four years especially, the traffic is going west. It's a solid line of cars. There must be employment out there for cars to go out there, I don't know about employment numbers, I just looking at visual, what I see. It's, they're going west now, there must be jobs where they wouldn't be driving out there. Um. I'll leave it at that for right now, but I'm gonna leave you with this. I heard that song first in nineteen seventies, when the Hyatt was being built, and I have cried since then. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, um, we're still open for additional testimony for this agenda item.
Hello, forgive me for breathing, I ran over here. I'm Felicia Cowden and I am testifying as an individual council member. I just want to state that. Gayen Robinson has been. An extraordinary land partner. And I think if we ever lost them. It would be powerful to experience what would be the case for us to look after Ni'ao. Or a lot of this land that they own. And what I have watched, um. Over the past twenty or so years is. Probably longer than that, but all the different big plantations, Amfac, Lehuie. Plantation, we know Grow Farm is selling off, A and B is gone. And. Grow Farm, I mean, excuse me, Gayen Robinson have been. Extraordinary in so many ways where they've helped with. The little things that aren't that little, like helping us after the flood on the, on the North Shore. That they have just done this Wildland Urban Interface at the request of the county, you know, and how to add more plantation camps. Um. I just kinda also want to give a shout out relative to our Honolulu buffalo, it really felt good. That they needed to move out of Honolulu, but they have a home. I find what they've done with Pacific biodiesel, they are working in all different kinds of ways to find ways. To add to their economy, they have a lot of land to take care of. Excellent for fire prevention. Excellent for fire prevention. And I'm kind of a little sad that they weren't allowed to make a presentation because I know that their plan has gotten smaller, so when people are testifying, I, I watched that they're supposed to present in the next event, but like, people test, I mean, next month, I watched at the beginning, so.
Pardon me, council member, there, you, if you would like to wait, the parties will be making the presentation.
Okay, well, I would have liked to have seen them make the presentation first so that the testifiers are accurately testifying to what the change is. So I just, you know, I, I know that they have a lot less that they're wanting to build than what's being said. I think Waimea Plantation Cottages has been pretty excellent. I, like everybody else, doesn't want to see a build out of anything. I definitely recognize we have too many resorts. We're, we're shaking from too much tourism. But I just, like, I, when I had to leave, I went over for our, our piece for
Fifteen seconds.
Acknowledging homelessness. And if they were bought out by a big, huge outside investor, those plantation cottages, all that stuff, we'd probably have more homeless. And what, what we need is jobs and houses. And so I really ask that you are very careful with what you decide here because I think we have to make sure they have options so that we can hold on to, you know, such a good partner and that they're treated with utmost respect in how all this is handled. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I believe, uh, we had a gentleman in front row that'd like to testify again. You have an additional three minutes.
I didn't realize how short the time was. I didn't get to say that in addition to having a parking lot and getting all the cars off the highway.
Sir, I'm, I'm so sorry. Please state your name again. Thank you.
Is it on?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Randall Uihara. And, uh, I'm here to say what I didn't get to say the first time. In addition to the parking lot that we need, that parking lot should provide immediate and the closest access for first responders to the beach. So an ambulance or the police can get there in case of an accident, shark bite, or heart attack because half the surfers now are old. I mean, there's a lot of old guys and I don't know where they come from, but they weren't there before, forty years ago. We need rubbish collection, uh, we need sanitation in the bathrooms, and it would provide changing rooms for the ladies and their little kids because families come there. The little kids need to be able to use the toilet, not in the bushes where we find diapers and rubbish all over the place, toilet paper. A lot of the bacterial contamination comes from that pasture because I rode my horse through that pasture after the cattle, and we find so much rubbish, it's disgusting. Um, the other thing that we need is for, at the very minimum, to have an opportunity for us to have more of this type of visitor. Because one percent is, is what I heard of the rooms available on this island are on the West Side. And we have so many more businesses now in, in Hanapepe as well as Waimea that cater to tourism. I don't know why all the boat guys moved to the West Side. But there's so many boat companies. I'm not sure if all of them are permitted. But, um, yeah, we could use more visitors that would provide the local businesses with that extra margin that might make them profitable, you know, and, and to stay on the West Side. So the few jobs we had in agriculture were threatened. I mean, I know Harton Brothers had to close. They had to lay off close to a hundred people. Working mothers, single mothers, families, husband and wife that were working there. There's just not that many jobs. And, you know, people talk about keeping it in ag in Kapalauai, and it's not Pakalauai, it's Kapalauai. Keeping it in ag. The only thing you can do there is have a few cows in that pasture because
Three minutes.
That's why kiavi beans are, they eat the beans, they eat the holi koa. But nobody's gonna plant a crop there. It would mean just, you know, e- even where that house is, the only thing they do is have a few cows. And it's not a lot. So, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
I'm, I'm sure I'll be back if there's more hearings on this subject because I have a lot more to say.
Thank you. Once again, um, for those who've already testified, we're allowing an additional three minutes for testimony. If you wish to testify, please approach the mic and state your name. Okay, none.
All right, if there aren't any more parties from the public who wish to testify, now we're gonna hear from, I think, we have one more person? Oh, Mr. Nita.
I wanna finish my testimony.
Please state your name again.
This. My name is Keith Nita, and I'm, I'm just here to finish my testimony because I felt that two important points that I wanted to talk about, I didn't have the time to do it, so I'll do it now. As the writer of this ordinance, um, I wanted to get into the structure of the ordinance. First of all, um, this ordinance does a number of things. One, it establishes a density limit. And I believe the limit is, um, two-hundred-and-fifty. Secondly, the ordinance was, we incorporated a kind of a very creative idea, I thought, was, was this thing called transition areas. It's similar to, uh, the transition zone mentioned in the Kauai urban design plan, which hasn't been adopted, but we use it as a guideline. It was done in the seventies. But the transition zones, there are three of them on the property. They're, they're to protect the fish spawn, the shoreline area, and the historic Robinson residence. And what it does is, uh, it creates a three-dimensional envelope on building. So if you can look at it, what it does, it, it tapers the building or whatever you're gonna put. It tapers it to the resource area. And, um, the other part about it is that, um, if you can picture the transition zone as a, like a target, and if, and, um, taking it as an aerial perspective, uh, what it does, it, as, as it gets closer to the resource area, like for example, the shoreline, the amount of coverage in that area is lessened. So the closer you get to the resource, the less you can do and the less you can build. And in this, i- in addition to the transition areas, uh, we incorporated special treatment zones to cover the burial sites, the fish spawn, and other resources on the property, historic resources. Um, and if you combine the transition areas with, um, the special treatment zone, uh, it, it encompasses more than half of the property. So about approximately ninety acres, I would guess, is encompassed by these, um, protective mechanisms. And another thing that we tried to do is that, um, use this ordinance as sort of a starting point for a number of things. One, um, is that, I, I, I think many people are not aware, but there's a, I guess internally within the department, we tried to impose a pathway starting from Kekeha all the way to Salt Pond. This project will provide one leg of it. So the developer was willing to, uh, dedicate, it's approximately an area about fifty feet wide along the shoreline. So people can walk. So eventually, over the years, when we, you know, many years from now, you'll see a, a greenbelt pathway from, hopefully from Kekeha to Salt Pond. See, project does that. The other thing that it does is that, and, 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 I, I think it hasn't been mentioned, is that the northwestern corner of the property is designated for affordable housing. So the, um, the, by, by this ordinance, uh, fifteen affordable housing units were built onsite. Uh, I think it's targeted for the eighty percentile. So there'll be housing opportunities, um. The other thing about it is that, um, there'll be a, I, I think Randy mentioned, um, you know, comfort station, parking area, shower, passive day use area. And
Three minutes, sure.
My final point was, the, the biggest fear I have, you know, um, as far as the, the use of this property is concerned, is if, if, if this zoning is repealed, years down the road, another developer will stop, probably apply for it, for some kind of resort use, and it will not be what this project is, you know, it, it'll be like rolling the dice again. So if you remove the zoning, it becomes an open house for, you know, something else in the future. And it won't be, I, I don't know if, how diligent and how how it'll, anyway, how people will approach the development, but I, I don't think it'll be as restrictive as what we have. Just for the commission's information, um, you know, if you look, take a look at this, this is the zoning of the property. The available area is
Could you please?
The area in white only. So this approximately half of the property is really usable. The rest are all constrained, so. And that was the thrust of this whole ordinance. And this, and, and just what I would hate to see get repealed is that the controls that we imposed on development, I think, uh, retain the character of the West Side, I think, because for one thing, you won't be able to see it from the highway or from the beach areas. So when we established transition areas, we carefully took a look at, um, the, the, the visual impact.
Mr. Nita, could you please wrap up your testimony?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay.
Done, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Mr. Nita, if, if that exhibit that you showed, if you would like, if you're, if you're going to, if the matter is deferred and you're going to come to the next hearing and you'd like the commission to see something, please bring copies for the commission.
Oh, yes, and then.
Or submit it with your testimony. Uh, if anyone else would like to speak? Mr. Nita, did you have one more thing you wanted to say?
My, I have a recommendation that if this, or, or, if the decision is to keep the zoning, I strongly recommend that condition three T of the ordinance be deleted, the one that the council imposed on substantial construction. So if this is approved, I mean, the decision is to retain the zoning, then I would retain the zoning on the condition that three T be removed because substantial construction is, is not a condition of zoning. Should not, never be a condition of zoning.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nita. Once again, um, last call. For those who testified once, if you'd like to testify another and have an additional three minutes, please approach the mic, uh, state your name, and you have three minutes. Looks like we have one more.
Uh, just a statement. My name is Michael Ferragamo. Uh, came to mind, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, when the reference was made to, uh, emergency services, uh, getting down to Pukalau as in case, because we have older surfers on the island, which I'm joining. And, uh, you might have to have some, uh, responses for that. But it just made me think of someone, uh, who had his ashes spread there. His name was Jay Logazo, I believe, passed away several years back. Uh, there were several of us there who helped pull him to shore. And, um, I know he loved this place, obviously. He's not there to speak today, or not here today to speak. But, uh, it made me think of him and just the fact that, he was one of the many persons who appreciated this. And I also like to commend the, um, response that day because what happened was actually ambulances did come in through Pukala Village. And, uh, first aid or lifesaving measures were executed on the beaches best they can. Obviously Jay did not survive, but, just another point that came to mind, we're talking about right now, um, and there's gonna be talk about amending the zoning. I just conservation. There are conservation zones, and I hope that everybody in this room starts to maybe percolate a little bit of that in their brain and what that means, and what that could potentially mean for the property and for the zoning question. But also, that's all I want to say, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Jay. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I believe we've wrapped up testimony for this agenda item.
Chair, if you'd like to invite the parties to come up now, I, I believe the Land Owners Council would like to come up and speak.
Yeah, I have no problem. Um, yeah, if the, uh, the Land Owners Council would like to come up and speak and, um, understanding that we'll, we'll be revisiting this in the December's meeting, I'll be, um, more than likely, I'll be seeking a motion for defer on this item. Uh, but if you could please do a short presentation for us and try to keep it around ten minutes because we'll do this again later.
I, I will do that, Chair. Thank you. Um, and, and thank the commission, uh, for accommodating us. Um, again, I'm Greg Kugel. I represent Robinson Family Partners, one of the two landowners of this property, the other being Bruce Robinson. And, uh, Bruce Robinson's counsel is, is present today too, Miley Miller, uh, in the back. Uh, and the presentation we thought we'd do is that I would talk to you about the two lengthy objection letters that we sent in and the reasons behind why we think these petitions, both of them, are inappropriate. And then following, uh, my, um, short statement, uh, David Louie for Kersner Management will, um, present and, and have, um, Group Seventy or G Seventy, excuse me, um, show you some schematics of, of what's intended so that you have a better understanding and it probably puts some of this testimony today in context. I, I think it's already been said, but the Robinson family has been an integral part of Kauai and especially the West Side since the eighteen hundreds. They purchased this property, uh, and other property of Makaweli in eighteen sixty-five. They built the family homestead, which still stands today in eighteen ninety-seven. The, the Robinson family owns approximately fifty thousand acres, perhaps over fifty thousand on Kauai, and, um, of that, twenty thousand acres is in State Conservation District, which is the most protective, um, land use district that the Land Use Commission has. And you can't do much with it other than the stewardship type activities that the Robinsons conduct. They also have twenty thousand acres, um, over twenty thousand acres that they dedicated as important agricultural land. Uh, and the reason they dedicated it is to continue to sustain Kauai's ranching and beef industry. They supply twenty-two percent of Kauai's beef, um, locally grown and raised here. And, um, so I think some of the suggestions that the Robinson family, um, is not hugely invested in agriculture um, on, on the island of Kauai, um, you know, is simply, simply wrong. And I, I think the focus has been on one-hundred-and-seventy-one acres, which has the lowest soil rating possible. And as you heard, actual agricultural is not possible on there. Maybe running some cows and not many. And the Robinson family has, um, taken steps to care for the Kauai community with jobs, uh, with employee housing, as you've heard. Um, and over the years, they did not sell out like the others did. Um, instead, they looked for ways to continue to keep agriculture alive, to continue to keep the Kauai community that they have supported, uh, employed and housed. And so you heard Mr. Keat explain a variety of different things they've tried over the years as sugar's phased out. And this project at Kapalauai was seen as a way to offset ag losses um, while being true to the community and the property, not intensive development. It is very low impact. As you heard Mr. Nita testify, what was envisioned is not the hotel that you or I think about, um, normally. So I, I'm just gonna summarize the arguments, um, that we So I'm just going to summarize the arguments that we make. First and foremost, rescinding an SMA permit along with the other permits and then downzoning the property is a clear violation of what's called the vested rights doctrine. When somebody obtains the last discretionary approval, and in this case, that's the SMA permit, and then invests money in good faith reliance on that, the county cannot revoke that permit, cannot downzone the property. There's been a number of cases that have gone up to the Hawaii Supreme Court on this, we cite some of them in the brief. The granddaddy of them all came out of this county itself, Nukolei. So that's the most important part. Again, I think what's glossed over is that this project still appears in the current Kauai general plan and the West Kauai community plan. And those were revisited as recently as twenty eighteen and twenty twenty. They show up there, they're recognized there, so I heard some comments about, well, our community plan should focus on other things. Well, this is the community plan. I think the planning department, if it goes forward with this and this commission and the county, if they do, it really exposes the county, not just to a lot of legal fees, but to lawsuits that really could cost millions. Violation of due process, violation of the taking clause, those type of things. And that's not what anybody wants to see. And finally, we point out in the brief that there's just some procedural faults with this whole process, first and foremost of which, you can't, in Hawaii, you cannot change zoning inconsistent with the general plan and the community plan. The Hawaii Supreme Court and our state statutes make clear that planning comes before zoning, zoning implements and follows what the plan is. And so this is a kind of a completely backward process. The Planning Commission rules themselves require in order to show cause before you can revoke permits like an SMA permit or the other development permits that were issued. There's no motion for in order to show cause before you, this is the first time you're hearing about this. And so we did not object when the, when the planning department suggested that this matter be deferred. We agree that it should be because as the volumes of paper that you've all received, much of which was in the last few days, I do think it behooves you to go through that and certainly to read the the letters one aimed at each petition that the Robinson Family Partners have submitted as well as the Kirzner objection. And I should have said that Kirzner has a development agreement with the Robinson Family Partners to develop this project. And Mr. Louie will explain that further. Thank you for your time and thank you for hearing our perspective today, even in light of the possible deferral because I think it's important for the context, thank you.
Thank you.
Aloha, Chair, Commissioners, my name is David Louie, I'm the former Attorney General of the State of Hawaii. I served under Neil Abercrombie, Governor Neil Abercrombie. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. As you can see, we filed on Friday and it took forever to get these things copied and I apologize, we didn't give it to you folks earlier. You haven't had a chance to read it, I'm going to summarize what's in here and try and hit all the highlights, be very brief, I'm not going to repeat what my colleague Greg has said, but I do apologize for the amount of paper. I represent Kirzner, Kirzner Management Group. We have a development agreement with Robinson Family Partnership. And this, it's a, it's for a long-term lease. It is, the whole purpose of this is to work with the Robinson family to build a world-class, small, high-quality resort development which fits with the Kauai general plan, which fits with the West Kauai community plan, which fits with the Land Use Commission of the State of Hawaii and which respects the cultural heritage, history of the Robinson family and the West Side. And will bring substantial benefits to the community in ways that are more than economic. They're going to be cultural, they're going to really benefit the community and there's going to be plenty of opportunity for community input and for further testimony, for people to say, hey, this is what I want, this is, you guys should think about this thing. This is what the Kirzner has been doing, Kirzner came in in twenty twenty-two. And the big thing is, and I apologize for the stack of paper, but you know what this stack of paper represents? Is twenty years of approvals, twenty years where this property has been zoned resort. Twenty years where the Robinsons have filed report after report after report saying, we are intent on moving this project forward, we're still here, we still want to do things. They've had some difficulties, that is true, but they are moving forward. I'm going to have Jeff Overton of Group Seventy show you some renderings and things like that, but he was hired by Kirzner to move this thing forward. They have completed nearly half of the reports that would go with supplemental environmental impact statement. And, and so they've spent a lot of money, Kirzner since twenty twenty-two has spent five million dollars in consultants to make this project something that people would be proud of and would enjoy. And my colleague and I, Laura Liu, who you all know, are here and we're very privileged to represent that, to represent Kirzner. I will say this, the petitions, we would urge, first off, as a procedural matter, I have to ask for a contested case hearing, it's in my papers. We believe that you could not appropriately downzone the property or revert, revoke the permits without having a contested case hearing with an evidentiary hearing, hearing. There's case law on that. So I'm asking for that. But we think that the commission could simply reject or deny the petitions or defer them indefinitely because there's a better path that we have actually proposed to the Kauai Planning Department. We have prepared, Max Graham prepared and submitted to the Kauai Planning Department, a proposed zoning amendment that, and then we were told, get an SEIS, get a supplemental environmental statement, comply with chapter three forty-three. That's fine, we're moving forward to do that. We are on a path to, to make this better project that everybody will be proud of. So if the commission decides to downzone and revoke, it likely leads to litigation, we're certainly going to litigate, people don't walk away from millions of dollars that easily. Okay, not that I want to, I'm not threatening anything, I'm just saying there's a substantial risk of litigation. And we actually have a better path, the better path, and you're going to hear from Mr. Overton. We have had Mr. Overton, they have recommended to refine this project to, to reduce the impact on the environment, to have a hundred and thirty-four units, not two hundred and fifty units, a hundred and thirty-four, that's almost a fifty percent reduction. And to increase the number of workforce housing units from fifteen, which were previously approved, to fifty, that's like a three hundred and fifty percent increase. And then to fix, you know, emphasize the pond and all the cultural things. So I'm not going to bore you with those, let me turn very, very quickly to the legal infirmities of this petition. There are a whole bunch of procedural infirmities which Mr. Kugel has pointed out and are in the papers, I'm not going to talk about that. The legal infirmities is that the petition is based upon a single note from a single staffer at the BLNR. What happened was Mr. Place appealed the shoreline certification back in two thousand and six. Under the law, the BLNR is supposed to do two things, one, determine standing, does Mr. Place have the right to oppose this? And once that is determined, then you, you have briefs. And once that is determined, then the chairperson is supposed to make a determination. But the BLNR never determined standing for Mr. Place. So the Robinson Family Partnership and Kirzner are in this legal limbo about what do you do on the shoreline certification? They were made to wait, not from anything that they did, they were waiting for BLNR. And we believe it is improper for the Kauai Planning Department to try to rely upon this, there's a note of a staffer that in two thousand and eleven, he talked to a third party named Scott Ezer, who was not authorized by the Robinson Family Partner, Partners to talk about the program. And they had an ambiguous conversation and there's a note that says, well, maybe we should go forward, maybe if, if we go forward, then maybe you need a new map. That's basically it, there's no abandonment, there's, the Robinson family has never said, we abandoned. The Robinson family has never said BLNR has resolved this. Kauai Planning Department has never determined when something was resolved under condition three T. I mean, how fair is it to say ten years ago, something happened and, oh, you missed that deadline? You've missed your eighteen months. That's not fair. And the problem is, is that Kirzner and the RF Robinson Family Partners have spent millions of dollars in reliance upon all of these approvals, the zoning plan, the LEC, general plan, West Side Community Plan, which have been reaffirmed in twenty twenty and twenty eighteen, that this is resort zoning. And then they meet with the Kauai Planning Department from twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two up through, midway through twenty twenty-four, there's all these meetings with the Kauai Planning Department of Kirzner with, hey, we're doing this, what do you think about this? How can we improve the project? How can we make it better? Let's do this, yeah, we'll take your suggestions. In twenty twenty-four, the planning department says, oh, you know what, you missed your chance. We're going to have to revoke the zoning and we're going to have to downzone everything. Because you missed your chance, although we never told you anything, nobody ever told you anything, BLNR never said anything. That's the height of unfairness, that for several years, Kirzner has spent millions of dollars in reliance upon all of these approvals and even meetings with the Kauai Planning Department. So I'm going to leave that at that and now I'm in the interest of time and thank you, Ms. Barzilai. Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to make a very short, brief presentation. And now I'd like to turn this over to Jeff Overton to make a brief presentation of how this project has been refined and how we plan to move forward. What we want to do is have the commission deny or reject the petition and allow us to bring a zoning amendment forward with a refined project that Mr. Overton will describe. Thank you very much for your, for your attention, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, Jeff Overton, I'm a principal planner with G Seventy and we're pleased to have a brief presentation of the project. We were retained by Kirzner International to provide master planning, conceptual design work, environmental assessment studies.
Mr. Overton, I heard that you have distributed this map.
There are two new exhibits that we introduced today, labeled Exhibits H and I. And there are smaller versions of two of the exhibits that I'll be presenting here.
After you speak about those, could you turn them around so that the public could see them? And there are also copies of these on a table over there where the public can take a copy of this if they'd like to.
Can I do this as part of my presentation or should I?
Yes, most definitely.
Okay, I will, I will speak.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, so we're retained for a number of planning and environmental consulting and permitting support. It's been almost four years now, we've been helping to formulate plans for Kapalawai Resort as a unique, sustainable, low-density plan that integrates the historic Robinson estate home and restores the culturally significant Keke Poo fish pond. It's a very integral part of the overall plan. This new plan is going to be introducing a refinement to the project that was approved earlier with a village concept that provides significant workforce housing in concert with the objectives of your West Kauai Community Plan as well as the Kauai Destination Management Action Plan. The exhibits that are referenced, and we have a four-page letter that's part of the record, our site plans, the old site plan, the new site plan, I'll show you these. Timelines of the meetings that we held with the county, the proposed amendments, also the status of all the technical studies that we've completed to date over the last four years. A recently completed K'Pakai analysis report is also included. And then a timeline that we project for the environmental studies and the entitlements, along with that, the two aerial perspectives that I'll speak about. First off, the two thousand plan or the plan that went through general plan, State Land Use Commission and also the zoning and SMA permits that were approved earlier, this century, earlier in two thousand. So this is two hundred and fifty resort units that was approved and that was the zoning that stands today. And you can see how it's spread in different locations across the property, has a pretty broad footprint in there. It was a good plan, that was approved by your council and Planning Commission back in two thousand through two thousand and two, the final approval being the SMA and the class four zoning permits. So it was a long and thoughtful process and that resort designation, it was upheld again in the refresh of the community plan in twenty twenty. So that stands today in the West Kauai Community Plan. So this is the plan that's from about twenty years ago, here's the twenty twenty-five plan. So we're at a hundred and thirty-four resort units, we're a hundred and sixteen units less than what's proposed, what was approved in the zoning. So you can see we have a lighter touch on the land, we're adopting sustainability principles such as resilience, we're set back further from the shoreline in this area. We have a greater respect for the ancient fish pond that's in here, so they're set back further from there. We also have, and it's a lower overall density to the plan, it's a lighter touch on the land, which Kirzner is known for. If you look on their website, you could learn a little bit about what Kirzner does, very nice, low-density project. So reducing the units, managed retreat, and this really limits the extent of disturbance to the land grading and other aspects of development on the property. So we're seeking also with the reduced unit count to minimize the consumption of water and the generation of wastewater and such. And this is all consistent with that your visitor destination management plan, really lighter touch, more quality and also still generating and diversifying employment opportunities in the West Kauai region. These plans are exhibits in your packet there. I wanted to just show a couple of perspective views. Bruce, we can take pictures here anytime.
Oh, yeah, you can keep going, I'm not interrupting.
Here's an aerial view, if you're an Eva bird or you have a drone, of what the built-out resort would be in, in the twenty twenty-five plan. So you can see how it's really set back, it's very complimentary in terms of the design, low rise and very spread out in here, set back from the ocean and, you know, one to two stories in height. You can see in the middle, it's a little hard to see, the restoration of the historic Robinson Estate, a great opportunity for that. And of course, the fish pond in there, as was discussed on the far end of the property, would be the requirement to establish the public restroom and small parking area for access, that would be part of the requirement, it is in the current zone. And then another view, which is really relevant to today's meeting is, and I've surfed to P'Kalas but not recently, here's a picture from the water, accurate scale of what the resort was going to look like if you're surfing at P'Kalas. And so again, it's across the bay, very low rise, fits in, most of the trees are much taller than any of the units that are proposed in here, set back and following a design approach that really respects this quality, low-key setting really of the West Kauai side. You have, you have copies in your packet. So I'll hustle along here. As was mentioned by David, we had ten different meetings with the county planning department over a course of a couple of years. And they were very productive meetings, we had a chance to hear concerns from them about how the plans would fit with the existing ordinance and we made adjustments to the plan to help better fit with that. So they're very positive recommendations that we adopted with time. And we spent, as I mentioned, a number of different. And we spent, as I mentioned, a number of different meetings together with the team. We proceeded with our technical studies that are needed, things like marine environmental studies for the water quality, flora and fauna studies, comments that were raised earlier, cultural studies that we did. There was already very comprehensive archaeology. We'll be supplementing that with further archaeology. The Kapakai Analysis, which is included in your packet, that was completed in July. And so we've completed over, the twenty is the target. We're more than half done with all the studies that would be needed to support what we believe was a new SMA application. It will now be part of a supplemental environmental impact statement. As you know, that Kapakai Report addresses cultural resources and practices that may occur in relation to the project area and determine if this proposed action will affect and identify cultural resources and practices and offering mitigation recommendations to protect native Hawaiian rights. One of the real central parts of the project, and I'll go back to the two thousand and twenty-five plan, is the restoration of Keakapuna, the center, the fish pond in, in the center here. So we are in the process of consulting with experts on island that are very well-versed in fish pond restoration and working through that effort. And it, it will be a fabulous result of this project to restore this fish pond. It's heavily overgrown and the, the history is tremendous. If you get a chance to glance at it in the documents, restoring that will be a vibrant symbol of really the how the community is going to have new access to this site, which hasn't been available for over a century broadly to the community. So that, that's an important part of the cultural process going forward. I know I'm running a little bit long, so I'll, I'll try to hustle on. I mentioned the EIS process. So we, in our meetings with the Kauai County Planning Department, learned that they felt it would be appropriate for us to produce what's called a supplemental environmental impact statement. There was one done and approved for the earlier study. So it was a very comprehensive report. Here we are today. The project's been refined. We're going to prepare a supplemental EIS. So that starts with a preparation notice and a public scoping meeting. So there'll be plenty of opportunity for continued engagement with the community and other stakeholders. So that will continue this process, probably the beginning, our first quarter of two thousand and twenty-six, going through that process. And that EIS is, is going to run through the rest of the year. That, that concludes my, my remarks here. Thank you for the time to speak to you about the project.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I would like to, would the department like to make any comments?
Thank you Chair briefly, Deputy County Attorney Krista on behalf of the department. In, in lieu of repetition, I'll reserve my substantive arguments for the deferral date. Just, I would say that I, I do disagree with the arguments of council from both, from both council, as well as some of the characterizations and legal arguments that they made. The department stands by and supports its petition. And just to clarify, for clarification, what exactly is being sought? The, the planning department submitted a petition requesting that this commission recommend the, or approve a petition to recommend an amendment to the ordinance, which is PM two thousand and one dash three ninety, uh, three fifty-six, to rezone the project area known as Kapalawai from resort back to agricultural and open districts. But again, for the substantive arguments, they're pretty thorough in our, our petition, but I'll, I'll reiterate those and flesh them out a little more at the deferral time. Second, the department also acknowledges that it, and as council stated, it just received an ex, a voluminous amount of material on Friday. Although I consider myself a quick, pretty fast reader, I have not been able to get through it as well. I can assume the commission has not as well. So it would be requesting that the matter be deferred so that the department can take more time to evaluate and review this material. Also, third, the department recognizes the extensive amount of written testimony, which it would like to fully analyze and consider in its evaluation before the next deferral date. And also recognizes and appreciates the public testimony, all the public that came down, took time out of their, their busy schedules to come and testify. And again, the department would like time to evaluate and consider that, I mean, going forward with its petition. So with that, I'd recommend that the commission defer this matter till the, the next available date.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a quick statement too. And I'm up here with Chris. This is a zoning amendment. We're not formally in contested case, but I'm here with Chris because we do anticipate litigation. And I think one of the council members, one of the council, you know, kind of both councils explained it on behalf of the landowner and the developer. What I was a little surprised, but I guess not, is that it was brought up at meetings with the planning department for two years as if somehow this is the planning department's fault that we're in this situation. As if they hadn't hired legal counsel, as if they hadn't hired planners to advise them. And so I take umbrage with that statement. And also the fact that having informal conversations, regardless of the developer, regardless of the applicant, we generally find this how we can work together issues. With a statement to that effect that, you know, these informal discussions are going to amount to litigation that will cost this county significant sizable amounts of money. I'll be discussing with our attorneys on whether we should even pursue having informal discussions with any resort applicant. Because if these informal discussions can result in litigation, as if those informal discussions have, you know, commitments in them, then, then, then perhaps the department was at fault for having those informal discussions. But from here on out, I'm certain that regardless of where we go with this, that discussion with any group, this one included, informally will not be happening again. Thank you.
Thank you Department. Commissioners, at this time, we're able to hear from the public. We're able to hear from the, from the landowners, representatives and also the department. Any further discussion? As I mentioned earlier, I'll be seeking a motion to defer to the December ninth meeting. But the floor is open if any of you, the commissioners would have anything to say at this point.
I think given the amount of material that has come in, both testimony as well as all this material, very clear to me that we should defer. So I would like to make a motion that we defer this item until December ninth. So we have time to look at the material we've given.
I'll second that.
Commissioner's motion on the floor is to defer this agenda item over to the December ninth meeting. Any further discussion before we go on to a roll call vote?
Can I ask a question? Is it, is that enough time for both the county and for the litigant? And for us?
This was a lot of reading for one month.
I, I believe so. I don't think the parties on the floor had mentioned they need any further time than December. So I'll assume so, but please correct me if I'm wrong.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna have to come to the assumption that the request has come from the department to defer this to the next meeting. And the material that we need to refer to is coming from the owners or the applicants. So I would imagine that that time would be sufficient.
Would you like to add a comment?
Chair, David Louie again, Representative Kirchner, and I appreciate the comments. I'm, I, I, I'm not here to cast dispersions on anybody at all. But I, I would say this, if the, the attorneys, county attorneys are going to be submitting something, which they mentioned they, they will be doing, may we get that earlier? Then, and I apologize for my submissions, which were on Friday. But is it possible to get that maybe three or four days early? So, so that we will have an opportunity to read through it and maybe make comments? If that's possible and, and so I would just ask that.
Um, I have to ask Mr. Donahoe if he's intending on putting in a reply to your documents.
And if not, that's fine.
We can file a week in advance. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we would greatly appreciate.
Published with the agenda and it will be served on parties.
Thank you very much. And, and we, we're not asking for, you know, leave to file something else, to get too many filings. But we would just like to know that so that we could make comments about it for the commission.
Okay.
Thank you so.
Thank you, noted.
Anything submitted will be submitted pursuant to the rules for public notice.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further comments? Commissioner Akko, did you have something you'd like to add? Earlier? Okay. If not, I believe we have a motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, like to go to a roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Motion on the floor is motion to defer Z A two thousand and twenty-six dash one to December nine, two thousand and twenty-five. Commissioner Akko.
Aye.
Commissioner Cox.
Aye.
Commissioner Renellis.
Aye.
Commissioner Otsuka.
Aye.
Commissioner Stradford.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, I'm so sorry. I made an error. Motion to defer Z A two thousand and twenty-six to December nine, two thousand and twenty-five. Still okay with the vote? We proceed. Commissioner Stradford.
Aye.
Chair DeGracia.
Aye.
Zoning amendment will be heard in December. Thank you.
Okay, before moving on to the next agenda item, I'd like to take another ten-minute recess. Thank you.
A piece of late testimony, Ms. Cummings, you'd like to come up and testify on Z A two thousand and twenty-six one, shoreline setback ordinance amendment. You have three minutes.
Hello Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Rosalyn Cummings, appearing as petitioner equity, exercising my kuliana and due diligence to protect vai, 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 kaha kai, ivi kapuna within Makaweli, ahupua. This entered on the record and for the record by evidence of law under rule of law. Agenda F three, Z A two thousand and twenty-six one, A Bill twenty-nine sixty-nine, shoreline kaha kai setback in calls of protection, County of Koitie Planning Commission, November tenth of two thousand and twenty-five. I, Rosalyn Nicole Manava, Akeal Malama Mary Cummings. I am the trustee and principal in chief of Malama Cummings Ohana Gaj Trust, Allahfahu'olina huaaina William Kuualu of Makaweli, rule of law and jurisdiction. The applicant's own testimony that this land came from Victoria Kamamalu acknowledges a royal patent under Hawaiian Kingdom law, that admission invokes a doctrine of continuity and the kingdom's lawful title and trust obligations remain in force. Under RE boundaries of Pulehunui four, H A W two-three-nine, eighteen seventy-nine, a royal patent is the final act of sovereignty. Therefore, this county acts only by delegated authority, not sovereignty, and is bound by separation of powers to uphold, not rewrite, rewrite the law already standing. The law of evidence and fiduciary duty, I have already entered a proof of service upon unnecessary government agencies and their legal representatives establishing standing as huaaina huaaina under the law of vai, eighteen forty. Konaina versus long eighteen sixty, water and shoreline flows are common. Trust under the law of sepulture eighteen sixty, ivi kapuna protected property. Oral testimony from moopuna is primary evidence and equity. No consultant, report or administrative summary can override it. And let the record reflect this maximal of the law, ignorance of the law excuses no one. Once the law is spoken into the record, every officer and applicant is charged with knowledge and accountability. By invoking cultural heritage, the applicant have triggered treaty and international duties under the law of nations and doctrine of discovery, which his body must not perpetuate through omission or silence. Equity exists to prevent crimes of omission and unjust enrichment. To ignore oral evidence or withhold required proof is to profit from inaction and it's a breach of trust. The petition for remedy, I petition that the commission take no substantive action, action in Bill two-nine-six-nine until jurisdiction and fiduciary records are cured, recognize oral testimony in lineal standing as the highest form of evidence and equity and acknowledge that any act taken without proof of title, consultation or lawful authority constitutes constructive fraud and breach of trust, all rights reserved under konavi, doctrine of continuity, doctrine of discovery and law of equity without prejudice. Hei li kaaina hei kaua kekanaka uapa kawai, uapa keola, the land is chief, man is servant, where water touches life for wicked mahalo.
Thank you. At this time, we are moving on to item H one, general business matter. Petition to revoke special management area use permit SMA U two thousand and two-six, project development use permit PDU two thousand and two fifteen and class four zoning permit Z four two thousand and two twenty pertaining to Kauai tax map key four-one-seven-oh-oh-five-oh-oh-one, Kapalawai Makaweli, island of Kauai, state of Hawaii. Chair, you'd like to say something?
Yeah, thank you public for being here again today. I will be seeking a motion to defer this agenda item, just like the zoning amendment. But we will open it up to public testimony.
So we do have folks who are signed up to testify as last time, again, as we, as we suggested earlier. If your testimony is repetitive of your testimony on the zoning amendment, we're addressing now the petition to revoke entitlements. This is a different subject matter. It's a different pleading. I can quickly go through the list and if you'd like to come up, please do. Philip Keat again. Gordon Labez. If, if your testimony is not duplicative, sir.
So white, white.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I, I want, I want to add something to my previous testimony because it's a similar issue that I support their revoking the, the ordinance, of course. There was some testimony today about how great it'd be to bring jobs to the west side. And I know most, most of you staff and commission don't go to the west side very often. So I'm gonna throw a few think, decision things in the hopper. One of them is I walk my dogs every day at the, the vacation rentals over there at the, in Waimea, the Waimea Plantation. That's a failed resort, you guys. That's not, they're not creating wonderful new jobs. It's, it's turned over restaurants maybe six or eight times since I've lived there. There's very few patrons. It's not, it's just part of my argument that this is not going to be a, a, a resort that pencils out economically. And that's why they haven't developed it in twenty years. The other thing I'd like to correct is that Bologna has two slices, no matter how you cut it. And the Robinsons may do a lot of nice things, but Mr. Robinson chases people with a shotgun off the land. If you, if you try to surf on the seven miles of beaches that they've locked up, he'll come after you with a goddamn shotgun. I mean, so yeah, I'm sure they do some good public benefit. But I'm an environmentalist and I can tell you that one of the most harmful things for the environment is cattle. And I, I could launch into an hour discussion about why that's true. But maybe just consider that cattle as agriculture is not a, a good environmental use of the land. And as a physician, I can tell you that if you eat cattle, it's going to affect your health in a very negative way. So those are my two points to just throw in the decision making. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Rosalyn Cummings. Testifying on the petition for revocation.
Hello, this is under general business, one petition to revoke SMA. My name is Rosalyn Cummings. I'm sorry, SMA two thousand and two dash six, PDU two thousand and two dash fifteen, Z four two thousand and two dash twenty, Kapalawai Makaweli. Same parcel as rezone bills, Z A two thousand and twenty-six two. And this is just questioning jurisdiction of conflict. Department as petitioner and advisor, HRS section ninety-one dash nine E, dual rural conflict. What I do want to bring in here is my ike kapuna. Now, this quinthar development is happening on an old fish pond area. I see the map there and I've dealt with development in the past couple of years. All these angels are being named, has a fiduciary duty to protect our cultural rights. I've noticed even with the permitting process, these guys have been hiding burials. I've noticed even with the permitting process, these guys have been hiding burials, desecration of burials. And desecration because once you disturb, even on the surface level, that's considered desecration and it's written in law. Now, in that area, there's a, a large amount of water and I know this because my family is from Pakala. And my grandmother taught me limu in that area. My grandma taught me that when water travels, see fish ea, whether it's mono or like. A kule, any type of fish, they always navigate through smell. So from the smallest fish to the predator, predatory fish. And the thing is, once any adjustment in development, Kolo is a prime example. You alter the whole entire ecosystem. And it's a fiduciary duty by all government agencies to protect our natural resources, regardless of everybody's opinion. And or what they neglect. So basically, when you have. Punava or vae entering into the kai and kaha kai. You have percolation happening, but you also have a component which we call vae avava or vae kai. When these two meet, anything, any nutrients, whether it's negative or positive, it amplifies that nutrients. So, when you have development, you're gonna see contamination coming into these areas, whether it's. A year, twenty years or thirty years, it's gonna happen. So decisions gotta be made based on the reflection of a fifty to a hundred years. And the Robinsons, regardless of what people say. I believe if you look at what was happening prior to the arrival of the Robinson family to where we at now. All we see is negative impacts. And when people want to bring up development, progression cannot come at the cost of our natural resources because that is our Commonwealth as all people. So I just want to put that on the record to make sure that that is disclosed. That all cultural practices exist and still exist because we still as Kanaka, uh, we are alive and well. And I'm a continuum, so is my children and grandchildren and our surroundings, and even if they're not Kanaka, to teach them that limu exists. And these different cultural practices, the kilo exists. So I want to thank you guys for your time today, mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony.
Steph Iona. Uh, Steph Iona is not here. Randall Uihara. Elena Huffman. Blanche Yoshida. Bruce Place. Please state your name for the record, you have three minutes to testify on the petition for revocation. Your microphone, Mr. Place.
Oh, okay, good. I see it's green now. Bruce Place for the record. My question is, how can this SMA permits be issued when the shoreline certification is under appeal? In the two thousand and seven, um. Kapal Resort Annual Status Report Review. They show, uh, you know, everything has been approved from. From January two thousand and six until, um, December two thousand and six. That's council approval, approval of zoning amendment, proven of the SMAs, approval of everything. How can any of that be done without a certified shoreline? And as for the certified shoreline. There's no discussion of appeal from D L N R, as you've stated. I never received anything, they never received everything, by state law, nothing's done, it's denied after sixty days. My appeal. That's still does, that doesn't change the fact that their shoreline certification is pow. None of these amendments that went through in two thousand and six are legal. In my opinion, you can follow that up. In the two thousand general plan, I was active in that, these resorts were inserted. Into the plan. We wanted them out. It was very little discussion because they were inserted and they were in there. That's why they're in the plan. We have, let's see. I'll go to these pictures right here. You have two pictures they gave you that shows proposals. Direct violation of the state land use commission. They, one of their conditions is they state, no building shall be visible from the ocean. Also too, when you look at these renditions, they've completely taken out everything below fifteen feet. That means you can see straight through it. Now, as for what's happening there presently, we are now at, uh. A massive, massive erosion right now. Three point two high tide. It's going away, trees are falling in and everything is being eroded. It's, and their picture shows a great big wide sand beach. They ain't got a wide sand beach there now. You gotta walk down, when you walk down to the other break, um, you gotta go around four trees. So, we're looking at first, an SMA permit and, and everything that has not been verified. And, and is up in the air. This is, and still I will say again, this is not the place to build a resort. You have, okay, you have people there that could sue you and the county. If they're there during the tsunami like the last one, have to leave, come back, nothing happened, and their thousand, three thousand dollars are, uh, gone. It is not the place for the resort. And I can go into much more detail, I wish this commission would grant me the same amount of time. To refute and appeal, I mean, what they, they get ten to fifteen minutes, I get three. And I can cover all the land, I have to go because I'm done.
Mr. Place, you're very welcome to submit written testimony.
I, you can go back to the two thousand and two thousand form I submitted, what I've submitted, it's still viable now. And I will, you have to read.
Thank you for your testimony.
Is Hannah Sklar here? Sorin Belice. Akai Young. Kanani Santos. Steve Parsons. Steve?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Steve Parsons. I, um, I volunteer a lot of organizations, one is Surf Rider Foundation and, um. Yeah, I'm again, I'm, I'm for revocation of this, uh, permit here. I, a couple of things. One, let me just premise something super quick here, I'm gonna write, use twenty my seconds to read something. Um, from on climate change. Uh, global temperatures rise feel, might feel gradual, but the change it can bring can be sudden, massive and self reinforcing. These changes are what scientists call tipping points. When a tipping point is reached, the earth system abruptly and dramatically changes, often irrever- reversible. Like the Amazon reef forest turning into a savanna, a point of no return that is already perishedly close. But last week, a group of, uh, scientists announced that the planet has already reached its first major tipping point. The widespread death of warm water coral reefs. That's primarily due to rapid rise of marine temperature, seabed absorbing ninety percent of the. Excess heat we've created, but also the acidification that comes from the atmosphere interacting with water. Um, and so forth and so on. But basically, we're no longer talking about future tipping points. Uh, there's one happening right now, right? And so just let that sit for a second, like, we may have crossed a tipping point for coral reefs. And, and I, if you're approving this, 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 uh, this, any development in that area will not help coral reefs. So you're choosing development over, our, our coral reefs are, are so important, right, for storms, right? So any damage to that coral reef out there, that we're, that's very polluted anyway, that's been ported out. Uh, it's not gonna be helpful, right? So you're tru- you're choosing resorts or profit over people. Uh, also sustenance, right? The surfing aspect is a, you know, first world problem. I mean, I enjoy surfing, I'm, I'm grateful to be there. It's quite been a very healing place for me as a disabled veteran. I'm, I'm grateful to live here and to have the privilege of surfing Pakala on occasion. Um, but again, Surf Rider Foundation, we're against this, we think this is a bad idea. Uh, for more contamination to our oceans when they, we may have just crossed a tipping point. And so, and sea level rises going up faster, I would also commend the county and council, uh, for, uh, sticking up. For, uh, you know, things that are important, uh, changing setbacks and being progressive about that, I think that's so important. And so, uh, and that data's stale too, by the way. Uh, in, in sea level rise, uh, that's coming up, um, and it's been delayed. But when that comes up, I mean, Chip Fletcher, U H, uh, U H has also said, yes, this is true about, you know, the coral reefs. So we, we need to take action locally to protect what we've got. I mean, it's this, this precious, precious resource. And again, just the aspect too, culturally, I get it, but also, you know, from youth groups and, and where people go to seek peace. Uh, K A L Foundation, I know is really great about interviewing in, in like, uh, teen suicide, right, and, and overdosing and stuff like that. And if you take away what happens at Pakala right now as a healing place. Then, three minutes? Yeah, I'll land and I may pick it up again, then you're gonna destroy those areas overnight, it would become just like Waiahi, right? Which, nothing wrong with that, but it's half tourists, half beginners, and that's not a place, uh, for Pakala. And lastly, lastly, just, you know, you say this as part of the west side, you know, plan and sentiment from community. I understand there's some people that are pro for, for the jobs, but I think if you're clearly from the west side community, that is not part of, part of vision that they have. So please act with, uh, good, good stewardship and thank you for everybody's time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Kelly Hughes. Jim Pilgrim. Barbara Wedner. Excuse me, Lisa Luton. Michael Ferrago. Erin McKenzie. Mahailani Chandler, Megan Wong. Is there anybody else who would like to testify?
I believe they're outside.
Okay. Maybe Shank can step out? Good afternoon, please state your name for the record, you're testifying on petition for revocation.
For Kalalea?
This is not Kalalea, this is the Kapalabai property.
I think I already did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I can't hear out there.
Is there anyone else who has not testified on the petition for revocation who would like to testify?
Yeah, um, if you're, if you've already testified and would like an additional three minutes, then, um. Please approach your microphone, state your name, and you'll have an additional three.
Think after fifty, Bruce Place for the record. Um, this is from. Time extension request, additional findings, special management area use permit SMA U two thousand two dash six, May twenty third, two thousand and six. The applicant is now cleared, the SMA permit has expired. And has requested a time extension from May twenty eighth, two thousand four to May, they say Mary, but it's May, twenty eighth, two thousand eight, complete substantial construction. The four years being requested include the nineteen months that have already passed since the expiration date. The applicant attempts to do a two-year extension. They were already behind on that. Th- this has always been lagging. They work on, on, um. Just will catch up, but never, nothing ever gets built. Nothing's done. You have a very historical place. You have an area that is historical through the Robinson era, through the Hawaiian era, and through the Menahuni times. This has always been inhabited. When Captain Cook came, there were three thousand people there. Maybe thirty thousand. This was a city, the king lived there. This is better used as a hub for historical restoration. Not development. Waimea Plantage cottages does not go. And if you say jobs, if you're paying somebody under twenty dollars an hour, they're going in the hole, they'll never get forward in the west side. You have to make forty to eighty dollars an hour to even rent. You have to make a hundred dollars an hour to buy. Nobody, this will not help. The thing, the what helps is the high paying jobs at PMRF. And anything, that is the type of business you want to bring to the west side. High tech. Months that these kids can learn, they video game to death, let them go and use that skill. To get themselves a job that pays them a hundred thousand dollars a year and they can work from home, from the west side. This is the vision I see, not a development at a place that is dangerous. You're gonna get sued by people and all sorts of stuff. If they want a resort, the Robinsons need a third leg. I've said this from the beginning, you go back to my testimony twenty five years ago, they need a third leg. Put the hotel where there's no danger to the people that are staying there and it is better. You cannot put one in this area and expect people to come and pay thousands of dollars a day to look at trees. Why not put it where it goes up and they can look at the ocean? You have no ocean view from there. If they do put an ocean view there, they've cut the trees down below fifteen feet. And they, with two hundred feet of the ocean, they're in violation of law. To be stay in the law, they have to have a belt of two hundred feet. Of nothing that's touched and they can't replace the tree. Three minutes, thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else for additional three minutes?
Aloha, Steve Parsons, Surf Rider Foundation, some other environmental groups locally and nationally, just a couple other. I, you know, don't forget unintended consequences when things are, uh, being built. I, I do happen also, speaking of sharks and what, wear a shark bands when I'm out in the water there and, and most times when I'm surfing, I forget. And noticeably, I have more, um, metallic heavy metal debris. Uh, actually on my surf bands right there, so there's, there's definitely pollution problems in there and any. Any disturbance of the ground is gonna, you know, make that worse. And, uh, I, I did also, uh, quickly, uh, ping, uh, Dr. Carl Berg is one of our executive committee members. And he also said any, any develop, you know, so the question is to him, how would any, uh, development at Pakala. Effect nearshore water quality? Uh, parking lot, oil surface runoff, sewage, pesticides use, just, you know, more people being in the water with, you know. While we do try to good job with the sunscreen stuff, that certainly would increase that amount and whatnot, and many, many more. So just, you know, understand that, that we are, we can't afford to sacrifice our reefs anymore, we just, we just can't. So that's important and I, much respect to anybody that gets into the community after many years and Robinson family. And, and maybe there's some kind of a win-win trade-off that can be, uh, set up where there's, you know, liberal, uh. You know, running eco dude ranch or something like that, I, I don't know, but that's for other people smarter than me to figure out. I just wanted to testify about the environmental stuff and thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, is there anybody else who already testified would like an additional three minutes for your testimony?
Does the landowner or, um, developer want to make any comments? Thank you.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Greg Kugel for, um, Robinson Family Partners. Um, I don't have anything to add, um, that wasn't said earlier in regard to the other petition. We, we filed a written objection to the revocation as well. And, um, I, I may have n- neglected to say last time that we demand a contested case hearing on both petitions. Thank you.
Aloha, Chair Commissioners, um, I'm David Louis. Uh, I represent Kirzner. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to testify. Uh, I would like to incorporate by reference all of my earlier remarks that I made on the down zoning, rezoning, uh, petition. Uh, for both myself and Jeff Overton, who is our consultant, uh, so that it's just part of the record. We did file a joint petition opposing both petitions with regard to the, the, the revocation permit. Um, our request is one that we, um, uh, be allowed to participate. Um, formally, if we haven't already been allowed. Um, there's a little unclarity there. Two, we, uh, request a contested case hearing. Because we believe that the law requires a contested case hearing if the commission decides to move forward with this petition. Uh, but three, um, our position is is that the commission, just like on my last, uh, comments. I- if the commission will deny the petition or reject it, or just hold it in advance until we can move forward with a zoning amendment, we think there's a better path. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, would the department like to add anything?
Uh, Deputy County Attorney Chris Donahoe, I'll incorporate my, my previous statements and no objection.
Deputy County Attorney Chris Donahoe, I'll incorporate my previous statements and no objection to the deferral of this petition for revocation to go along with the petition for zoning. That's all.
Thank you. So Commissioners, at this point, would you get like any further discussion, have any comments?
Could I have clarification? I may not have understood it. You're asking for a deferral, is that what it is?
Yes, on the, on the motion for, on the petition for revocation, yes, to coincide with the petition for rezoning.
Thank you.
Do you have a recommendation for the, hold on? Till the, till the, till the December ninth?
It should be heard in December and I believe that the request originated with Chair. For a deferral. It's the commission's request.
Commissioners, any further discussions, any clarity on anything? Yeah, like I mentioned earlier, I will be seeking a motion to defer this item to the December ninth meeting.
I move we defer this item, the petition to revoke special management area use permit SMA U two thousand oh two six and project development use permit PDU twenty-two dash fifteen and class four zoning permit Z four twenty oh two twenty.
Okay, Commissioners, motion on the floor is to defer this agenda item, special management area use permit SMA U two thousand twenty two zero zero two dash six, project development use permit PDU two zero zero two dash fifteen and class four zoning period permit Z four two zero zero two dash twenty till the, to the December ninth commission meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we get a roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair, roll call. Commissioner Rocco.
Aye.
Commissioner Cox.
Aye.
Commissioner Ornellis.
Aye.
Commissioner Otzuka.
Aye.
Commissioner Strayford.
Aye.
Chair DeGracia.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes this item, thank you all for coming. I'm moving on. I know we have consent calendar in between.
Sorry, Council, the agenda was approved as is, so it would move on to general business matters, which is a series of other appeals against the director's decision. So I'll stay over here with Chris until that's resolved.
Okay, we're going to proceed. Item H two. Director of Plannings Recommendation to Revoke Applicant Jen's Olson Nonconforming Use Transient Vacation Rental Certificate, TVN CU number five oh three two, an issue in order to show cause and set hearing. Memorandum in support of petition, declaration of Ka'aina S. Hall, notice of meeting and certificate of service, two six seven two, Hu'upolo Road, tax map key four two six oh oh seven oh oh seven one, Oloa Kauai. Item A, notice of appeal of revocation of TVN CU five oh three two, dated October thirteen, two thousand twenty-five. We have one party registered to testify, who is Roslin. Vacation rental, revocation.
Hello, Roslin Cummings, mahalo, Commission Chair. Under TVN CU number five zero three two, I would like to take note of appeal, file delay, due process violation, point of record, or point for record, procedural due process breach and failure to maintain record. I just feel like at the point I didn't have anything to really look over, but these are the things that I want to bring forward regarding that. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, we'd like to take a quick five-minute recess, we'll be right back.
Chair, I believe the landowner is here on that agenda item.
Yes. It's a procedural matter, we have to look for some documents, we're getting right back on to the record.
Like to call this meeting back to order.
Aloha, Chair, Planning Commission members, my name is Jen's Olson and I'm here today to clear up a misunderstanding that occurred. Apparently there was a complaint issued against my TBR that I've had for almost thirty years. I've been in Poitou Beach, down by Whalers Cove for twenty-eight years exactly, operating as Kauai Cove. And the person, the complainant thought my car was a rental car and took a picture of it and filed a complaint as though I had exceeded my boundaries on, apparently renting out three units or whatever it was. As a result, I'm here today to clarify that I am operating in complete compliance with the law and that the billing that is in question now is in compliance with my permit as issued.
Mr. Olson, I understand that you have appealed the decision of the planning director.
Yes, please.
Okay, so the action before the commission right now would be whether they would like to issue in order to show cause and refer this to a hearing officer, at which time you would put on evidence in your case. So on that matter, maybe the department would like to make a comment.
Thank you. Deputy County Attorney Chris Donahoe, on behalf of the department, under one dash nine, or under chapter nine, appeals can be referred out to contested case hearings. We would have no objection to that. But my understanding is that, that, I have no objection to, and I'll make communications with the complainant or the appellant to try to work something out. But at this time, I have no objection to referring it out to contested case hearing and then sending it to move forward with the hearing officer at that time.
Are the Commissioners?
Just to clarify, and the landowner, I can say, has been cooperative with our enforcement team in rectifying the situation. Being that it is a valid TVN CU that's currently, that currently operates. The department is asking, the appeal was forwarded to the commission, the department would ask that we still forward this to the formal process and then Chris will begin discussions. If we have to go through the full contested case hearing, we're prepared to do that. However, it's our understanding that we may be able to come to an agreement and an understanding prior to hearings officer reviewing it on that first date. But we just want to go initiate that formal process.
So the first matter at hand, Chair, is whether there are grounds for an order to show cause. Was there, based on what you've reviewed so far, is there a failure on its face? Is there a failure to perform? And if the commission decides that they want to issue in order to show cause, do you want to send that out to a hearing officer, knowing that the parties will probably attempt to negotiate a settlement if that happens? Which seems to be agreeable on both sides.
So at this point, the commission needs to first, with the evidence that we've, what we've read and what we've, what we've heard today, to see whether or not we're going to refer it out or if we, if there's some merit to this appeal?
Yes, if there's merit, then you should issue an order to show cause and refer it to a hearing officer. If the appeal is deficient for some reason, you would dismiss the appeal. Those would be your options.
But is there also an option where both parties, as they say, they're willing to have more discussion? Is that another choice?
In other words, you would accept the appeal as to form in content, but you would defer your decision on the order to show cause? You wanted to do that? I think that what we're hearing from the department is that they want to commence the formal process, which can be settled at any time. If it's referred out to a hearing officer, it doesn't necessarily have to go to an evidentiary hearing if the parties settle.
Yeah, I always appreciate when both sides are willing agreement to work things out and not to be without the hearings officer.
Anything else from the department?
Just that under one nine two B, it defines the contents of the petition for the appeal and the department believes that it meets the requirements for that. So therefore, under one, one dash nine three, if the petition contains the proper requirements, one through six of one dash nine dash two, the director shall place matter on the commission agenda and then set it for, and shall afford the opportunity to be heard at a contested case. So because it's mandatory, it's because it shall, department's position is shall, is mandatory, that it be referred out for contested case, it does not stop the parties from communicating to try to work this out. And then we would of course inform the hearing officer of the status as it moves along.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. So Commissioners, are we all following, I guess? It's in this situation, we could open up, you know, further discussion on the floor or we could just move to, while I accept the motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that the commission requests that the applicant show cause for dismissal and refer this to the boards and commission for assignment to a hearings officer.
That's the motion, second.
Okay, Commissioners, motion on the floor is to refer this out to a hearings officer?
It's a motion to issue in order to show cause.
Order to show cause and to refer this out to a hearings officer. Any further discussion before we take a roll call vote? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote?
Yes. Chair Rocco.
Aye.
Chair Cox.
Aye.
Uh, no, excuse me, Commissioner Rocco, Commissioner Cox.
Aye.
Commissioner Ornellis.
Aye.
Commissioner Otzuka.
Aye.
Commissioner Strayford.
Aye.
Chair DeGracia.
Aye.
Thank you, you'll be notified about your contested case, Mr. Olson, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you for your time.
Next item, H three. Petition to Appeal Action of the Planning Director and the Administration of the Subdivision Ordinance as Provided For in Chapter Nine of the Kauai County Code as memorialized in that certain letter dated July twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five, subdivision application number S two thousand twenty-three one, Kukui'ula parcels A two, F two, F three for properties located at Lawai Ahua'a, Kona District, Island of Kauai, tax map key number four two six oh oh two oh two oh, BBCP Kukui'ula Development LLC, received on July twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five, which was referred to contested case hearing on August twelve, two thousand twenty-five A. Notice of Withdrawal of the Petition to Appeal the Action of the Planning Director in this matter. I believe we have the landowner's attorney here, if he'd like to come forward and discuss this.
Hello, thank you, Ms. Farley, Honorable Chair, Planning Commission members for the record, Monica Trask. This matter, and in line with what Commissioner Otzuka said at the prior agenda item, last time we were here, this matter got referred to a contested case hearing on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five pursuant to state statute, we were, and this was not a, unfortunately necessary appeal, it was something we had to file. But nonetheless, we always spoke well with planning department, weren't easy, but we came to an agreement and therefore pursuant to settlement agreement that's attached to the notice of withdrawal, we will be withdrawing our appeal and proceeding without having to engage in the time and expense, either on our behalf or the counties with hearings officer and contested case.
Okay, does the department have any comment?
Thank you, Chair. Deputy County Attorney Chris Donahoe, that is correct, a settlement has been reached. No objection to the notice of withdrawal based on the agreement to resolve the matter. And I believe that the one thing that we forgot was to add the chair's signature line, that's what we're asking for.
I'll address that now. So I think we're looking at a couple of things. If the commission is comfortable, you would want to entertain a motion to receive the notice of withdrawal and then you would want to entertain a second motion to approve settlement agreement and vacate the contested case. And then finally, as Mr. Donahoe just noted, we'll need Chair's signature on the settlement agreement. So we can just draw on a line and have him sign off. So with that, I'll allow the Commissioners to ask questions or discuss.
Commissioners, any questions for the department or applicant?
All right, good. So does this mean that there have to be three separate motions? Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't think the final action needs a motion, Commissioner. I think we just write in Chair's line, it was just an oversight on the document that.
But the first two have to be separate motions?
Yes, so it would be a motion to receive, the notice to withdraw, and then a motion to approve settlement agreement and vacate the contested case. We can break it down, if it's too much of a mouthful, we can break it down even.
I move to receive the petition to withdraw, or the, withdraw, the petition to withdraw the appeal action.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioners, motion on the floor is to receive the notice of withdrawal?
You can do a voice vote on that, that's fine.
Okay, we'll do a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, hearing none, motion carries.
Now addressing the settlement agreement, Chair.
What is it, a settlement? Can I say a motion to approve notice of withdrawal, petition to approve action?
I think we just addressed that, Commissioner.
I thought that was a received.
Yes, you have received the notice of withdrawal and the parties have reached a settlement agreement. If you are in favor of the settlement agreement, you would move to approve the settlement agreement and vacate or cancel the contested case because the parties have settled. And it could be done in two different motions too, if you don't want to do it like that, that's fine.
I move we accept the settlement and vacate the contested case.
Second.
Yeah, Commissioners, motion has been made and seconded to approve the settlement and also vacate the contested case. Any discussion before we take a vote? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Moving on to H four. In the matter of a notice of violation in order to pay fines for illegal commercial events within the agricultural district, weddings, retreats, spiritual events and private ceremonies, and the failure to cease and desist and secure the required permits and the construction of seven yurts without the required permits related to the property located at Hui Road, Anahola, Kauai TMK four nine oh oh three oh oh one, Kalalea Trust, applicant as appeal file, CC two, two thousand twenty-five one, petitioner's equitable objection to County of Kauai's memorandum in opposition to entry of default. And we have two people signed up to testify, Megan Wong. Please state your name, you have three minutes.
Aloha, my name is Megan Wong. I'm testifying in strong opposition to the Kalalea Trust's continued illegal activity on Hui Road in Anahola and in support of the county enforcing its notice of violation. This isn't a rumor, this is the county's own record. Kalalea Trust has been cited for illegal commercial events, retreats, weddings, spiritual gathering in a residential and agriculture zone, and for constructing seven yurts without permits. Despite that, they continue to host five-day retreats and charge thousands of dollars per person while pretending it's a private ministry. That's not a ministry, that's a business. The community on Hui Road has been dealing with this constant traffic, noise, disruption from these events. We live here, this is not a resort. It's a residential neighborhood where families kupuna and keke deserve to feel at peace and safety. Allowing one trust to keep profiting after being cited sends a message that our planning laws don't matter, that those with money. that those with money or influence can ignore the enforcement. That is not pono and that's not fair to anyone following the rules. And I ask this commission to uphold and enforce the violations, order an immediate stop to all commercial retreats until proper zoning and permits are in place, and require accountability, including fines, remediations for any unpermitted structures. And please remember, this isn't just paperwork, it's about protecting our community, our ina, and the integrity of the laws meant to keep them safe. So mahalo again for listening to me and standing with the residents of Anahola who are asking for fairness, enforcement, and respect of our home. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony.
Um, the Hailani Chandler. The Hailani Chandler.
Aloha, you guys. Okay, my name is Honey, from the Hailani Chandler. Um, I'm twenty-five years old. I'm a new mom and I grew up here on Kauai and I come from this ina. I'm testifying against Kalalea Trust because what's happening on Hui Road in Anahola is not pono. They're holding big retreats, weddings, and spiritual events, charging thousands of dollars to people flying in, all on land that is zoned residential and agricultural. This land isn't meant for profit or retreats, it's meant for people who live here, raise their kids here and protect this ina every day. What they're doing is illegal and it's disrespectful to the community and to the ancestors of this place. When outsiders come here to make money off our home, it hurts everyone. It drives up land costs, it disturbs the peace, and it sends the message that rules don't matter if you can afford to break them. That's not the kind of Kauai I want to raise my baby in. I'm asking the county to enforce the violation, shut down the illegal commercial use, and stop letting these retreats happen until everything is done properly. We're not against healing or gatherings, we're against people exploiting our ina without with while ignoring the laws and the people who belong here. Please stand with us, protect Hui Road, protect Anahola, and protect our community from this ongoing misuse of land. Mahalo for hearing me.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Um, Chris, oh? I want to apologize to Mr. Bellis, I didn't see you there. I'm sorry, I know that you're not here on this item. I I thought you had left with the others, so sorry that you have to wait. Um, I don't see the landowner here uh for the Kalalea Trust. Um, maybe you'd like to hear from the department?
Yeah, does uh department have any comments?
Chair has a statement to make first.
This morning, the commission received the supplemental transmit of the notices of violation which have been served by the planning department on Kalalea Plantation CPR, where the Kalalea Trust landowner holds a unit which is the subject of this matter. Recently, after the this landowner defaulted during a contested case on several of these violations, the commission adopted the hearing officer's recommendation to dismiss the owner's appeal. Several additional violations have been issued. Our deputy county attorney Laura Barzalai asked that the owner's filing be placed on the agenda for the commission review. At this time, I'd like to hear from the department on this matter.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, deputy county, and thank you commissioners. Deputy County Attorney Chris Donahue for the department. Um, did we get confirmation that um the landowner was not present?
I mean, we can call outside if you guys want to.
That would be, that would be great.
Who would do that? Three calls for Mr. Carl Langschmidt, who is the trustee of the Kalalea Trust. Doesn't appear that Mr. Langschmidt is here.
Thank you, Ms. Barzalai. Um, just briefly, a a a quick history because the the submission that is bef- I just wanted to clarify the submission that is before the the commission because it kind of mentions a lot of of words and and it was, it's a filing in a circuit court matter. Um, so initially, there were two notices of violations that the landowner appealed to this commission. It was set out for contested case hearing. He did not appear for the contested case hearing. The hearing officer recommended on upon the department's motion that it be dismissed. Um, the commission approved that, so it was dismissed. Uh, in the interim, um, there have been seven more violations, so there's now nine pending notices of violation. While the uh contested case hearing was pending, Mr. Langschmidt um and and Kalalea Trust filed with the circuit court for something called a writ of prohibition. Um, and that is what is reflected in five CCV dash twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-two-two. Which is, in the department's position, is an extraordinary remedy and it was kind of irrelevant to the contested case hearing that was ordered. So um under the Hawaii rule of appellate procedure, which dictates the the writ of prohibition, the only response necessary is if the court entertains it and orders the parties to respond. So there was no response from the department. Mr. Kamura, the hearing officer who was also named as a party, did file a response. Um, so Mr. uh Langschmidt, on behalf of Kalalea Trust, in this civil court action, or in circuit court, filed a request for default judgment against the department for not responding to the courts, to his request for writ of prohibition. The court denied that. Then he filed an amended request for default judgment. Requesting um, again, the the department did not re- respond. Um, as I stated, the department's position is it doesn't need to respond to a writ of prohibition because, one, the cap- the department believes it's the wrong um procedure that he needs to follow. And two, it wasn't ordered by the court under the rule. That was also um, we in that, but just for the court's clarification, the department filed an objection to the motions, the request for default for those reasons. That he didn't have to respond, it was the wrong uh avenue. The court denied uh in the um, and the court denied, again, denied the request for default judgment. So then, on October first, tw- twenty-twenty-five, um Kalalea Trust filed equitable, so in fairness, um, with the court, he's requesting, he filed objections to our objection to the entry of default. The second one. So he's objecting to our opposition. Um, and so um, you know, in the interest of 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 allowing pro se defendants or defendants who represent themselves, leeway, I looked at this as could this be a petition to appeal to the commission? Bec- but one, it was filed in the circuit court. It's references things that were filed and documents that were filed in the circuit court. And two, it does not fit the content of a of a petition to appeal because there's nothing pending before the commission. Because the last action the commission did was dismiss or 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 um vacate the contested case hearing and order the dismissal of his appeal. Um, so I don't know why this was submitted other than maybe it's a courtesy copy of the commission or maybe it was but he's asking the circuit court, again, to reconsider his motion for default against the the county. So I I don't appear that this is, uh, it does not appear this is relevant to the the commission or the commission is taking any action on it. So um the department would move that that the commission deny this appeal and deny any any uh further action on this submission. And that because there is nothing pending before the commission to do to um take action on regarding this. And um, the department will continue to enforce against Kalalea Trusts uh and the trust, any listed trustees. So I'll I'll entertain questions if that wasn't confusing enough, but.
So in the meantime, while this is all going on, is he allowed to continue to do illegal, if considered illegal, you know, uh, events?
I'll jump real quick. He's not allowed, and that's why we're issuing the violation notices. But the department doesn't have police powers in the same sense that we can serve him with an injunction. The litmus test for that at the court level is is a little bit higher. Um, we definitely are in discussions with the prosecuting attorney at KPD because there are a slew of other types of legal issues at this property. Or other, I'll say, what, other laws being violated that are enforced and administered by other departments. So it's not a position that he's allowed to. He continues to do them and he continues to, and he continues to rack up significant and sizable fines. Um, the next step would would essentially be if if we folks dismiss this appeal or is maybe under the auspices of appeal, we dismiss this. The next step would be the department to work with the county attorney's office to pursue liens on the property, um, which have another legal leverage point.
So to add a comment to that also is I wanted this to come before you so that this person could have every opportunity to be heard by the commission. So in an abundance of caution, we put this item, even though I'm in agreement with Mr. Donahue that it doesn't take the form of an appeal, it doesn't meet the form of an appeal under the rules. But we take every precaution, we give him every ability to appear and state his case, he's already defaulted once. But I I can state on the record that my my counsel to you is that you approve, Mr. Donahue, is that you grant his motion to dismiss this form of appeal so that the department can go back to their enforcement case, which is what hap- what happened.
Commissioners, any questions? So to dispose of this, and it's not technically not an appeal because it did, it doesn't fit the form and character of an appeal, correct? We'll just dismiss this. What would we call it?
Well, it's it the um, it's captioned an equitable objection. So you can dismiss it, but you're making a motion to dismiss, right, Chris?
Uh, yes.
Motion to dismiss appeal. As deficient under rule one nine-two B, for failing to meet the form and content. Motion to dismiss equitable objection and return the matter to enforcement.
I move to dismiss the equitable objection to the County of Kauai's memorandum in opposition to entry of default. Second.
So commissioners, um, motion on the floor is to dismiss the petitioner's equitable objection. Uh, is that sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any further discussion before we move to a roll call vote?
Let me uh reiterate uh Commissioner uh Otsuka's question. Does this mean that he can continue on until this is resolved?
Uh, Deputy County Attorney Chris Donahue.
He or she?
No, no, it the um enforcement action is, continues to to go forth. Um, as as Mr. Hall said, uh Director Hall said, the planning department is limited in certain remedies that it can take as far as other agencies i- if they get involved, um prosecuting attorney's office, police department. But the planning department is using, is currently utilizing every, I guess, arrow in its quiver to to go after um Kalalea Trust because they are, they continue to rack up violations. And so um, the goal is to to uh have accountability and and to prevent this further violations. But no, it does not, he's not, he's not allowed to continue. He had, he wasn't allowed to start doing it. But now he's definitely not allowed to continue uh with the violations.
So each time there's a violation, it's subject to penalties, those penalties are subject to a lien that is recorded against the property. It's been discussed and referred to the prosecutor's office. Police department is aware. And I think basically, there's not much else that can be done at this point.
So by dismissing this appeal, essentially what we're saying is uh the enforcement action will continue as it's been going on. Is that correct?
Instead of entering into a contested case where this party can defend his violations, we back it up to the point of when the NOBs were issued and posted on the property, and we can proceed to take the next step, which would be a lien on the property. We also understand that this property is in um, in uh default on their taxes, uh real property tax, they have severe delinquency and might be subject to foreclosure as well. So we have some some things to work out with regard to what's going on at this particular property. And I believe that there will be something occurring at the circuit court. And if you you do see this matter again, we'll have a report for you on that.
If if I may, uh Deputy County Attorney Chris Donahue. Um, the commission, there is a, there here is a hearing coming up, I believe, December second uh on a hearing officer, the hearing officer, Mr. Kamura, was again listed in this lawsuit, filed a motion to dismiss five CCV dash twenty-five dash twenty-two. Uh, I believe it's December first or December second. The the department joined in the sub- in the motion um with the same substantive arguments. So um procedurally, it's the 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 county and Mr. Kamura are trying to have the the entire matter dismissed. So we'll see what happens in December.
Motion is ready for fold.
So the motion on the floor is to dismiss petitioner's equitable objection. Sorry, Lisa, um, motion on the floor to dismiss petitioner's equitable objection. Would you like a roll call vote?
Yes.
I'd like to say something.
Yes, of course.
I just, uh, I really appreciate the department taking every step they can. And I want to just apologize to those of you who are having to live with this while it gets worked out.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox. Yeah, we're ready for the roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Rocko.
Aye.
Commissioner Cox.
Aye.
Commissioner Ornellis.
Aye.
Commissioner Otsuka.
Aye.
Commissioner Schreifert.
Aye.
Chair de Gracia.
Aye.
Thank you. Going back to the regular meeting right now, subdivision committee report. Mr. Bellis is on.
I can join for the last item, but uh, anything happen while I was gone? Uh, next we have unfinished business, action item K one, class four zoning permit Z four, twenty-twenty-five dash six use permit U twenty-twenty-five dash four and special permit SP twenty-twenty-five dash one to conduct outdoor commercial events, including but not limited to weddings and public-private gatherings in a personal situation along the Mokasai, commonly highway, Kalahaila, formerly Olapua Gardens, situated approximately twenty-five miles west of Kalahaila Town. Uh, further identified as tax on key two dash four dash zero-zero-seven-zero-one-six, containing land area of twelve-point-two-eight-five acres. I, we don't have anybody signed up to testify from the public, is there any member of the public like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Marissa if you have any brief statements.
Just, the only thing is that this is a time extension request to the January thirteen, twenty-twenty-six meeting. And the reason for this is to allow the applicant additional time to complete their um shifty requirements.
Good, put one pause on it, Marissa, sorry, I just realized that I skipped the committee reports. So actually, the next agenda item was the subdivision committee reports. So before, we'll get right back to Olapua, but going to the subdivision committee reports, I'll refer to our subdivision committee chair.
I thought this was my lucky day. Uh, but several thousand words ago, I'm not sure how many, the subdivision committee actually met. Uh, we had six items that we dealt with. And of the six, I think both two were pretty much for extensions, two were deferrals, and two were actually approvals. So we only had six, uh, and all all of them passed. So with that, that's the subdivision committee.
I move to accept the subdivision.
Second.
Okay, commissioners, uh, motion's been made and seconded to approve the uh, the subdivision committee report. We'll take a voice vote on this one. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, hearing none, motion carries.
Sorry, I'll just double check, is there any member of the public wanted to testify on the subdivision committee report? Seeing none, moving on. Going back to Marissa, sorry, for. Going back to Marissa, sorry, for class four zoning permit Z four twenty five dash six, use permit twenty five dash four and special permit S P twenty five dash one. Applicant is Olapua Gardens LLC, so if you could just read it real quickly, Marissa.
Oh, I don't have anything more to add.
So the, this was scheduled on this meeting because it was specifically deferred to the November agenda item. The applicant is working to get S H P D's requirements in. And we anticipate having them back, and we are requesting a deferral to the January commission hearing. January, I apologize, I don't know if that's top of my.
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Thirteen.
January thirteenth, we're asking for a deferral to January thirteenth.
Is it important to note for the record that the previous request for an extension was actually not for November, but for December ninth?
Yes, it was noted.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, can motion?
I move to defer class four zoning permit. Z four twenty twenty five dash six, use permit U twenty twenty five dash four and special permit. S P twenty twenty five dash one to the January thirteen, twenty twenty six. Planning commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, commissioners, motion on the floor is to defer this agenda item to January two thousand and twenty six. We could take a voice vote on this one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, hearing non, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Well, we hope we were entertaining today, so.
Would you like to say something?
With that, announcements are the final agenda item, topics for future meetings, the next meeting will be scheduled here December ninth, twenty twenty five. At nine AM. In what will be part two of the planning commission's. Review of the Kapalaai zoning amendment and permits that is anticipated to be on that agenda. Um, we do have a handful of subdivisions as well. And I believe three or four permanent application requests as well. So I can't say our last meeting of twenty twenty five will be uneventful because more than likely will be eventful, but. No other meeting in November anticipates. I don't think we'll be out by breakfast.
He didn't say no.
With that, we'll have further items, unless there are other agenda items that the commission would like to review.
Commissioners, if nothing else, I'm taking a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Commissioners, motion is on the floor, on the floor is to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, hearing non, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.